All right. Excuse me. Six o'clock, and I'd like to call this speaking order Lancaster County Council. It's good to see everyone here today. We have a couple of representatives from Congress in Ralph Norman's office. Freddie, would you and Will stand up? We have Freddie Gault. Freddie is the senior field representative, and Will is a field representative for the congressman's office, and they will be glad to help with any of your passport needs. I don't know what kind of influence you got with the IRS. But y'all got cards. They are available. They're very, I've been knowing Freddie a long time. Very helpful. And with that, would you please rise and join Councilmember Terry Graham as a allegiance in our pledge allegiance, followed by the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we give thanks for this beautiful day. We give the chance, thanks for this opportunity to meet as a council with all these citizens attending. We ask that you give us strength and wisdom to do the right thing by all our citizens, all our county employees, and all our residents. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
All right, let's move on down to our approval of our agenda. I have a motion. Motion for Mr. McGriff to have a second.
Second.
Second for Mr. Carnes. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval. We'll now move on down to citizens' comments. Please bear in mind, this is not a period of dialogue with council or a question and answer period. This is your opportunity to address council with your concerns. I ask that you address your remarks to council as a body and not to any individual council member. Please speak into the microphones, state your name and address for the record, and you will have up to three minutes to address council. Your time will not start until you have provided your name and address. Tyndall Yarborough.
Thank you for all the information. That is my own position. It's a lot of work behind the scenes. Thank you for what you do. My name is Tyndall Yarborough, and I live in the city of Lancaster on Wiley Street. And that is my home. Thank God for it. My friends that live in the woods were discharged from MUSC Health in Lancaster today to the woods. They were put in an MUSC vehicle with an MUSC employee driving the vehicle and taken to a gas station to go spend the night in the woods. They weren't taken to any agency. They weren't taken to a shelter. They were told about a shelter in Rock Hill. They weren't taken to that shelter. They weren't given any continuing medication for the substance abuse issues that there are present and the detox and the withdrawals that were being taken care of at the hospital. No, no continuing of that. Not okay. Newspaper article came out last week quoting statements that were made in April, I believe, and also my friend's name and the fact that she is homeless. So that has put her in harm's way. This is what we're allowing in our county? Y'all, this is it. And you go to the United Ways page, and it reads as though we have an emergency shelter here, which we do not. We are given off the appearance that our county has an emergency shelter to help homeless people, and we do not. That is deceitful, y'all. And as you and everyone in this room can see, especially our first responders and the heroes that are in the street dealing with this, we are seeing more and more people walking around in these streets and sleeping in these streets. There's no more turning a blind eye. Too many years, too much time has gone by, and now it's more than in our face. These are people's lives, not only are laws being broken. This is humanity. Where is our humanity? It's gone out the window, and y'all have to be accountable for this. We don't have anybody else to do it. That's what government is, right? To protect the people from evil? Please do something. Hold the United Way accountable. I was reading up on your pass today, Denison. I like you a lot. I like, I have liked you since the first time I met you out at DSS that day. And I read your pass with United Way, and I was like, is this good or bad? I'm going to pray and believe that it's good. Please help make them be accountable for what they say they're going to do with these hundreds of thousands of dollars. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Yarborough. Reed Wilkerson.
Okay, you are on public hearing. Okay. Steve Willis.
Before I start, I believe Sherry has handouts. I've got a lot of background data. Took way more than three minutes. That is a handout. Steve Willis, 517 Rock Springs Road here in Lancaster. Mr. Chairman, council members, I come before you this evening as a lifelong resident of Lancaster County. The sheriff has not asked me to speak. I've not sought his permission to speak, and he's not aware of my planned comments this evening. All comments are my own. As noted in the agenda item summary, amendments will be needed this evening to the budget. I had the honor of working with six of you to help craft budgets over the years, and you know that many times I was accused of favoring public safety over budget priorities. I stand before you guilty as charged then and tonight. County government has certain constitutional and statutory services that must be funded, but once addressed, I believe that public safety is the primary function of local government. I'm going to use the library in an example, as they are a statutorily required service with an annual state proviso limiting cuts to their funding. You couldn't cut their bunny no matter what I say. I've not compared usage data, but would really wager that more individual residents annually utilize the services of the library than law enforcement, fire rescue, EMS, or the coroner. If you're using one of those services, you're likely having a really bad day. That said, in the hierarchy of needs, what good is a library if you and your family are not safe? We have outstanding department heads leading great employees, and I encourage you to consider what their priorities are. This may involve amending the budget to reduce spending in some other areas, and it may involve raising millage. No one wants to see that, but the concept of growth paying for growth is farcical. Let's look at some of the data. 2020 census, 96,010 residents. 2022 census, 104,577 residents, 8.9% increase. Using that same growth rate projected for the years, our population for the start of the new fiscal year in three weeks should be 109,231 residents, 114,092 by June 30, 2024, at the end of the year. That would be an increase of 18,082 residents since April 2020, more than the population of five of the 46 South Carolina counties and 244 of the 271 municipalities. The staff is not asking for your help needlessly. In closing, I urge you to discuss the need for detention officers with sheriff fail. By the end of the third fiscal year out, we should be at substantial completion of the new jail. Takes approximately 12 months to recruit and train a detention officer to the point they can function independently, so the final fiscal year is of little consequence. You have this and next fiscal year to take action. We do not yet have a projected staffing number from the state, but current jail, which is understaffed, has 121 beds, populations exceeding 200. New jail has a projected 329 beds. Doubling of the staff is not an unreasonable projection. Current personnel budget for the detention center is just over $2.55 million. I don't want us to be like Fort Mill, where they had to keep the newly built Banks Trail Middle School closed in 2010 for a year due to lack of funding to operate it. I thank you for your consideration of this request.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. John P. Baker.
John Baker, 2293 New Hope Road, He Springs. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, this budget year, the state has approved a 15% pay increase for public safety and corrections officers. Well, that's all fine and good, but our problem is if we go in and spend $20,000, $30,000 training these officers locally, and we don't match that pay raise, then we are basically paying for officers for SLED and for the Department of Corrections, because they will hire those people away from us as soon as they're trained. We need to match that 15% pay raise, or we're, or the state's going to be thanking us for providing their training for us free of charge. And I think that's an irresponsible use of the taxpayer of Lancaster County's money. So I would encourage you to please provide that 15% pay raise locally so that we are not sending our trained officers to other jurisdictions and to the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Gordon Johnston, 7401 Carmel Executive Park Drive in Charlotte. Council staff, good evening. I'm here tonight representing Century Communities as it pertains to item 8B on your agenda this evening. As some of you probably recall, over the course of 2022, Century Communities rezoned property located along West Shiloh Unity Road, and there was a related development agreement that was approved in December of 2022. So the ordinance item tonight, again, it's 8B, is really a clarifying ordinance that would amend the effective date of that agreement to allow for a full five-year term of the agreement. I won't get into details. I'll allow that for the agenda item itself, but simply wanted to let you all know that I'm here, available for any questions during discussion of the item. And again, thank you for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Claire McConaughey.
Good evening, Chairman Harper and council members. I just have two quick comments tonight. First, I want to thank you for adjusting the budget for the first responders after the first budget hearing and the workshop that you had on the following Wednesday. I ask you to use your wisdom to accommodate the requests of all the department heads even further. And I would especially like you to reconsider the EMS portion and see if you can get them to the 10% that they requested, considering they are literally in life or death situations on their shifts. As some of you discussed in your committee of the whole meeting, there are probably gray areas of the budget that can be tweaked to make that happen. And secondly, I cannot wait to use this Costco card in Indianland in 2025, along with several hundred of my neighbors and friends. The tax revenue from this property is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for a business of this caliber to become a partner in our county. Please vote in favor of the Costco points on tonight's agenda, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. McConaughey. We have two electric, electronic, not electric, comments.
Mr. Chairman and council members, we did receive two electronic comments. These are, copies of these are at your seats, and these actually came in after the planning commission but were for the night of the planning commission. So the first one is from Joseph Salerno. He said, "I approve a Costco being placed in the area. It provides a great anchor to the complex and also accessibility to something that requires us to travel by car, a great distance to go to today." The second one was from Casey Ryan, and she said, "I think a Costco would provide good jobs and additional value to 521." And those are it for tonight.
All right, thank you. That concludes our citizens' comments this evening. Let's move on down to item number six. We have one special presentation, an overview of the recommendations from the State Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee presented by Randy Duffy, Chair of the Accommodation Tax Advisory Committee.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and council members. It is my honor to bring before you this evening the recommendations for distribution of monies for the State Accommodations Tax Fund for fiscal year 2022 through 2023. These recommendations come before county council pursuant to South Carolina Code 6-4-25C. Council will be asked to approve the committee's recommendations via resolution later in the meeting. I want to thank and compliment Ms. Sherry Simpson, Ms. Veronica Thompson, and Ms. Donna Green for all their support, guidance, and help given to the Lancaster County Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee during our work session. Also want to recognize the members of the committee, Mr. Scott Edwards, Professor Stephen Criswell, Mr. Haskell Falconberry, Ms. Daniel Tonkary, and Mr. Chris Manor, whose service and dedication to the community is greatly appreciated. During this grant cycle, applications were to be received by April 28, 2023. The Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee met on June 1, 2023, to review the grant requirements, receive presentations from the applicants, and then discuss and finalize committee's recommendation to the council. The committee received four applications, and we recommend fully funding all four applications. The committee recommends the following: funding the Carolina's Chili Championship at $32,000, Lancaster Council, County Council of the Arts at $20,760, Lindsey Pettus Greenway at $15,000, and the Friends of the Buford Massacre Battlefield at $15,000. Total disbursement for fiscal year 2022 through 2023 will be $82,760. And even fully funding all the applications, the county will have $15,340 left over to roll into next fiscal year grant cycle. We are excited that these projects will bring tourists into Lancaster County via the funding provided for the following specific projects. Number one, for marketing and promotions for the Carolina's Chili Championship, which is a sanctioned international chili society event. Number two, public art murals for the Lancaster County Council for the Arts. Number three, additional light sensory snow machines, refreshments, and advertising for a December event for the Lindsey Pettus Greenway. And number four, purchase of four kiosks that inform citizens about the story of the Buford Massacre Battlefield, and installation of brick paver patios for the Friends of the Buford Massacre Battlefield. Thank you for your time, attention, and would appreciate approval of Resolution 1240-R2023. Mr. Chairman, are there any questions?
Now, when we, if we have any, we'll call you back up when we bring the resolution to the floor.
Thank you.
All right, let's move down to our consent agenda, and I have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent agenda items 7A, 7B, and 7C.
I have a motion from Mr. Mostella for approval of our consent agenda, and a second for Ms. McGriff. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval. Let's move down to our non-consent agenda, 8A, Resolution 1240-R2023 regarding endorsement of the recommendations from the State Accommodations Advisory Committee. I have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion for Mr. Carnes. Second for Mr. Graham. Ms. Thompson, there she is.
Good evening, everyone. You've heard the report of Chairman Duffy from the local, the State Accommodations Tax Committee, and I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have any questions?
I do.
Go ahead, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So when these applications have been submitted, do we have visibility to what the expectations were, you know, as a result of the funding for these tax dollars or this advisory tax committee?
Yes, there's a guideline that's on the county website, so they are to read the guidelines before applying.
Okay. And we can verify, you know, when these funds have been applied, kind of what the results of these events or the items that we're putting in for the Greenway? Okay.
There are special reportings that are required. There are interim reports and also final reports, and the final reports give more detail about their successes and any data that we may need.
And where can we find those reports?
I can provide them if you need to.
Okay.
They may be in, we just had a meeting on June 1st, so the final reports are on, in your, wherever your agendas are.
Okay.
One thing I'd like to add is that this year, we try to focus on a return on investment, and that's what I asked each participant to provide in next year's report. In other words, estimating your best guess method and how they collect data on attendance, what dollars they're spending if they're coming out of 10 miles from, and overnight especially, you know, give us some idea of what that number is. And so not only attendance numbers and overnight guests, and we're asking for dollars spent inside the county also. So hopefully that will give more information.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And Maroc, I know that this is a lot of work and that you all are spending a lot of time and effort in doing this, so I appreciate it.
Any more discussion? I think we're ready to vote. All in favor, Resolution 1240-2023, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval. I'll be recusing myself on orders 2023-1854 because I have a vested interest in this property.
Okay, we have first reading of ordinance number 2023-1854 regarding amending the effectuation date for the Shiloh Woods Development Agreement. Ms. DuPont and Mr. Marshdon will be fielding questions. Is there a motion to bring this before council? We have a motion by Ms. McGriff and a second by Mr. Mostella. It is before council.
Mr. Chairman and council members, this was highlighted by the speaker earlier, who's also available, is that council did do an ordinance on December 12, 2022, for development agreement for this property called Shiloh Woods. There's an inclusion about the, in the agreement about when the vesting rights start, and so this is really just to amend the effectuation date to allow them to have the five years vesting rights that were intended. And so this really is just to clarify that, as it says on here, is that it will start once the documents are finalized and presented. That starts the clock. And so there's a little confusion within the agreement about when is the actual effectuation date, and this cleans it up.
All right. Are there any questions?
So what is the date?
It is a little open, no later than December, December 22nd? December 31st? But it can be sooner, as soon as they get some of their documents in place, plats and different things lined up. So it can be earlier, but the point is to make sure that we all are working from the same starting clock, and is when documents are received that developers have to go to get all their permits and different things lined up.
And when you say December 31st, you tell them December 31st, 2023, or?
There is a finite day by which they have to have them done, which is December 31st, 2024.
24. So that's, that's effective date of this five-year term?
That's, that's, there is, they are beholden to a timeframe, so it's not just open-ended. But when the clock starts is either on that date or if they have their documents finalized beforehand. So that's just to clarify that they are on a timeframe. So it's not just open-ended. They can't sit on that for years and years. But on the other hand, they do want to recognize when they get the documents ready to go, the clock does start. And so this is outlined, the clock starts when the documents are presented.
I'm still confused.
Yeah, so just to be clear, so the effective date of the agreement can be no later than December 31st, 2024. At that point, the five-year vesting period will begin.
So you can clarify, yeah.
So that's the last, so whenever they file and bring recorded copies of the deeds to the county administrator, that would start it. So that could happen anytime from this moment till December 31st, 2024. So the vested rights could start on December 31st, 2024. But if they don't get those recorded copies to the county administrator, the agreement automatically terminates. There's no vested rights whatsoever. The agreement is over with if they don't do that prerequisite.
Yep.
This is something we approved in December 2022. I would have thought the development right would have started right then.
And that's what we want to, that's what we want to clarify, is that it did seem like there was some uncertainty within that, but generally our standard documents do outline when the documents are presented is when the vesting period starts, but we also usually have a finite timeframe by which they have to be, or the contract is null.
Because we're giving them a two extra years.
Not necessarily, yeah, not necessarily.
Well, they can, they could potentially get two more years if they want to delay and wait.
Yeah, that's why there's a finite time, so that developers can't sit on the property. So that's why we do at least have a timeframe by.
This, this was approved prior to the time that I was in council, and I would have voted no for this. So, because from my constituents, what I keep hearing is no more development in Lancaster County until we know that the infrastructure is complete, that we have the services that we can provide. We've heard from our finance group, Ms. Belk, earlier this year about how development is not paying for itself. Part of the reason that we have the budget that we're having discussions about tonight is because development is not paying for itself. So I do not want to extend additional time for development.
And I did vote no, and I also was appalled there was no fire service fee in there, there's no school impact fees, and there's no impact fees at all on this, so I'm going to vote no also.
Do you have any other comments? If not, then I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. The motion passes four, four, two against, and one recusal. I feel that if Chairman Harper, that he can come back and take his seat.
All right, let's move on down to 8C, second reading of ordinance 2023-1848 regarding rezoning property located and adjacent to 8574 Charlotte Highway, Indianland from PDD 26 to Regional Business and from Regional Business to PDD 26. The applicant is Crossroads Development, Cross Ridge Development LLC. Ms. Harding?
Yes, sir. This is second reading of the ordinance that you discussed at the last meeting. This is a swapping of zones for development that is underway prior to the development construction. I'm
Prior to the development construction of the roads and the like, there were outlines of the area for the planned development district, which is PDD, and also for the general business area around it during that time, and all this property is owned by the same property owner. During the time of development and the like, roads were placed out, site plans were constructed, and during the site plan review or sketch plan review, staff realized that the zoning line goes through part of a parking lot for one of the economic development impacts in this area, and that gave us some concern about the way that we would set out buffers and the like on that property line. So we worked with the developer to come up with a option whereby we change zoning for the two areas that are going to be outside of the planned development district regulations and to move the two properties that need to be under the planned development regulations into that zoning. There is a difference of 17,000 square feet between the two. The planned development district is losing that 17,000 square feet, which allows us to come forward to you with this as a request for rezoning. If the planned development district had been increased in size, we would also have to come and bring the planned development district to you for editing, but we're allowed to do less than what is, what was called for.
I apologize. I didn't get a motion to bring this to the floor.
Oh, sorry.
I have a motion, have a motion for Mr. Blackman, second from?
Hey, you got to start all over.
Mr. Masteller.
Hi, good evening. My name's Allison.
Go ahead, I apologize.
So the spaces that are shown on the screen are the areas that are impacted by the rezoning, and you can see we calculated the amount of acreage that is in each one of those sections. And again, the net change is 17,000 square feet into the general business district and away from the planned development district. This PDD is a mixed-use development allowed under the 1998 UDO. The district was not carried forward in 2016, but the PDD standards still apply under the legacy district. Neither the PDD or Cross Ridge Development originally intended for these properties to be developed as one. So we went through this application with the applicant who spoke earlier and is available to ask any questions. And to give you a little bit more clear picture, I hope, this is an aerial from January of this year showing some of the site work that's been done. You can see where the road patterns have been outlaid, but the property line is part of the triangles that are being converted. The two green areas will convert from planned development district to regional business, and the two yellow areas will convert from regional business to planned development district if you approve this ordinance. The Planning Commission and the staff both recommend approval of this. We feel it's important for this to go forward, for the economic development project to be able to move forward without a hiccup.
Any questions for Ms. Harden?
So, yeah, that was going to be my question. So what exactly is the developer planning to do with these parcels once this rezoning occurs?
There is a development plan that is in place for the area that's outlined in yellow. It goes from the street that's on the left of the screen to the street that's on the right. It has not been advertised yet, so we are keeping it as an economic development project. But that is, that is a development section. The area that's in green above it and the area that's in green below it are part of the leftover areas of the PDD that are going to be in part of a different development tract at some point in the future. Because the zoning that's abutting the planned development district is already regional business, this doesn't create any mismatch of zones. It allows for the area to be developed as residential business around where the planned development district boundary is.
Ms. Harden, I think you just said, just looking at this graphic, north above the upper green triangle is RUB. RB?
It's, it's currently planned development district.
No, 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 not the green triangle.
Oh.
Above the green, adjacent property is RB.
Yes, sir.
And if we looked at that bottom almost rectangle?
Yes, sir.
Property below it would also be RB?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I believe there might be, I wonder if we got that on that map on the first one. If you can see at the map, the purple areas are RB, the brownish reddish areas are PDD.
So not having seen what the proposed development is and what they're planning to do, I feel very uncomfortable adding additional development in Indian Land. One of the things that we did not read earlier was an email that's in my packet that talks about how the traffic in Indian Land is out of control. They want us to go through the traffic in Indian Land and experience what that is like. I live in Indian Land, I go through that traffic every day. It is very concerning to me, so I don't feel comfortable without understanding what the full impact of this development is going to be.
It is a commercial development, I can tell you that. It's one that will create jobs, and it is required to have a traffic impact analysis, which was part of the review. So they won't be going through any other, anything that anybody else would be also go through.
But until I understand what's going to happen with the roads and how we're dealing with the roads in Indian Land in particular, and 521 in particular, I don't care what it is. I am concerned with any development that is happening in Indian Land and adding more impact. This area is right near where all the schools are. It is going to be a huge problem for Indian Land, and I think it's going to be a huge problem for our public safety.
Mr. Louise, as part of a PDD, most of the rights for this development have already been approved, and they were really, other than us making these changes.
They don't need to do anything. They're already approved, then what are, what are they asking for?
All we doing is clearing up some property lines. I saw basically all they're asking.
That's going to help them develop this site. If they don't need to do anything, then why are they asking for it?
To clear up, to straighten up these property lines and stuff here, the zoning lines and stuff is all we're asking us to do.
Correct. And by this request, we will allow further development in Indian Land. If we do not do this, it's going to impact their development plans, is it not, Ms. Harden?
It will impact where they can put their landscaping, because we're required to landscape along perimeter.
Which means that they would have to put their landscaping further in, which impacts their development.
Impacts the parking lot, for sure.
Correct.
Any more questions for Ms. Harden? Any? The 2.7 acres that goes back to PDD 26, is it going to be subject to the current UDO, or is it going to be subject to the zoning in place for the PD?
The zoning in place for the PDD, so that it will be a unified development, a unified planned development.
I don't, I don't particularly like that part of it.
Anything else for Ms. Harden? Any, any more comments? Discussion? I thank you, Ms. Harden.
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, I think we're ready to vote on Second Reading of Ordinance 2023-1848. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, likewise. Second reading of Ordinance 2023-1848 passes by a vote of six, four, and one opposed. Let's move down to First Reading of Ordinance 2023-1846 regarding establishing a policy and procedure for naming rights. To have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion for Ms. McGriff to have a second.
A second?
Second for Mr. Carnes to bring it to the floor. Thank you. Mr. Clowden?
Actually, I'll take that, Mr. Chairman. Pleased to present to you and council the first reading of a topic we've talked about. As the county continues to expand services, we've had the opportunity to increase the number of facilities and amenities across the county, so the discussion's been brought up about how do we consider naming rights for current land and structures going forward? And so from our conversations we have in front of you, the first reading, where we talk about different guidelines by which you may want to approach naming, whether it be after people, landmarks, other things native to this area. So there's a couple of different options on how you would consider naming and kind of some parameters by which you would name within that. There is, part of the ordinance does read that you would consider people, you can do elected officials, you can do some who are currently serving, but also thinking about individuals who have passed for at least three years to kind of have some parameters around that. Also, as you look about naming individuals, part of that does have to have a unanimous vote. We also talk about renaming facilities when some of our properties or structures may reach the end of their useful life, it may be an opportunity to reconsider naming for those types of structures or events. And so there's also a process here about nominating different people or rationale for how you might approach naming, and so we offer this for your consideration.
All right, any questions for Mr. Marshdon? Go ahead, Ms. McGriff.
I just, just once for clarification, I had talked to Dennis Erwin about some of them. I think we need to clear up private or public.
Oh, in terms of a name and the number of times, yeah, because the?
You know, when, earlier, we've got some private buildings and public buildings named after the same persons, but we only mean county buildings for clarification. Define what useful life is, what's our definition of useful life? And in G4, it's not coming up on my computer, but G4, you mentioned meetings and conference rooms can be named. Is that the same requirement as a contribution? If we name rooms after certain people or whatever, that was not mentioned, whether it was a contribution requirement?
Excuse me. Now, the policy will apply to all, so for the rooms, you can name it after elected official currently, someone who's since recently passed, or some donor, whatever other means.
But it will cost you to do that, is what I'm saying.
Not necessarily. If council, at your full discretion, you can name a room in a building after somebody without a contribution.
Well, I think that needs to be specified, because it's not clear enough. At least, it wasn't clear enough for me.
If we look, because I think everything that, under G4 there, where you do have it, oh, I'm sorry, well, it does say a portion of facility, such as a meeting or other, may be named in honor of such individual or group. And so I think that addresses council's sole discretion that you can name a room or a portion of a facility after somebody, doesn't have to be with a donation or whatever.
But is that stated in that? It needs to be stated for clarification.
Well, it just says.
We know what it means, but people reading it may not know what it means. It just needs to be a little more clarity there. And I can't get it up on my computer, so.
Well, the clarity says a portion of the facility, such as a meeting or conference room or other public space, may also be named in honor of such individual or group. And so I don't know if there's something.
Is that on the contributions?
I think what she's trying to say is she wants to district, a distinction between the fact that you either got to pay to do it, or council can decide to do it, either or.
But it needs to be specified. You know, we take for granted that people understand what we're saying. That was not clear to me.
But if you, yeah, I got you, but if you also go, wait, you don't have it, but under F6, F6, which is not talking about donations or contributions, they're talking about exceptional contributions like community involvement, community support, we have similar language where it says.
You're not understanding me, Dennis.
Well, I think I am, but I think I'm trying to say it's covered in both sections. So maybe, let our attorney help us decipher for me.
I think I'm following what you're saying. So the part you're looking at, G4, is talking about individuals or groups or whatever that make donations of money can have a room or a conference room or a meeting room or so forth named after them. So that is, yes, that, the way it's written currently, it falls as number four under that item, which says it's only if it's a contribution, for some reason, to do that part. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And then moving up, that talks about it can be an individual, but that's a full property or a full structure. That's not clarifying that it could just be a meeting room.
Right.
I think what I'm hearing you saying is you may want to have something where a meeting room itself could be named after an individual?
Yes.
Under that section up there where we have those other parameters.
Yes.
Yeah, so we need to add that, it's called F6, I think it'll be our home.
That's why, that's why she's the attorney, Dennis. Yeah. One other, one other thing, you know, we, you named it unanimously, that the council will have to vote unanimously on certain things, and I wish I could pull it up. And I think that needs to be mentioned a little more, even if we are renaming something, it's at the discretion of council, but it's got to be a unanimous vote. I think you only mentioned unanimous once.
Yes, ma'am, you're correct. So there again, when you're talking about the properties or structures can be named for individuals who've made contributions, that's the only place there's a unanimous vote that's required. So, and I also hear you talking about a definition of useful life, so that is something we can look into as well if you would like us to have something like that in there, because that's under the renaming, and it does not have a unanimous vote required for that.
It does not need a unanimous?
It does not. No, the only unanimous, the only unanimous vote is under if it's a property or structure named for an individual, for the parameters that fall above that, 1 through 6 in F, that's the only place there's a unanimous vote. That requires the unanimous vote.
We need to say that, we need to state it. And that's all my concerns with that.
I say, the unanimous vote, are you saying unanimous vote for everything, or?
No, 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 we need to specify that it's only unanimous for certain things?
Okay.
And not for renaming.
But how is that different? So if we, if we were renaming something, we don't need unanimous approval, but to name it the first time, we need unanimous approval?
You only, you only need unanimous approval for one thing, and that is properties or structures owned by the county named for individuals who in the opinion council have made exceptional contributions to the community by having met one or more of the following, and then there are six criteria. That's under F. So anything else, that they're named after historical persons, geographic interests, that does not require unanimous, only the persons, when you name a property or structure after a person, that requires unanimous, a unanimous vote.
I'm sorry.
I feel your pain, Jose.
Yeah, there's a lot of confusion with this, where it goes back and forth. So I see what you're saying, Chairman, Chairwoman McGriff. So, and I think the question about useful life also needs to be addressed, because it doesn't clarify how we're defining that. And then one other big area of concern that I have is when we're talking about being able to cancel at any time, but we don't provide a reimbursement. So I'm not sure why somebody would, would do this, would pay for naming rights if we can cancel it at any time for any reason. That just doesn't seem to make sense.
I would say that's kind of your escape clause. If there is something that you're not fond of from a sponsor or whatever, you're right, we don't.
Which I agree, but I think if we're doing that, then we should at least provide some sort of reimbursement. I don't know why someone, but why would, if I was a business and I was putting in a substantial amount of money to get my naming rights on a field, and I see this clause, I wouldn't go for this, because we can change our mind at any time for any reason, and?
The refund would be on a pro rata.
Correct, correct. And I would agree with that, but I think there's got to be some sort of reimbursement.
Councilmember Louise, the way it is written, it says the renaming of a property by council will cancel all agreements, and Lancaster County shall not be required. So that, in my opinion, gives you the option, you could reimburse if you'd like, or you do not have to based on the circumstances, because you shall not be required. It does not say you shall not reimburse.
But as Councilman Louise is saying, though, to attract someone to do this by having that verbiage in there, it's a little bit discouraging. Maybe if we did clarify that if we did cancel it, there would be a pro rata refund or something. And then the only thing too, I got, so Dennis, when you're talking about we could name it after elected official, but somewhere in here it says they have to be dead for three years, is that correct? So I've got to kill Charlene before we can name anything after, three years later?
Or vice versa.
That's true. It's quicker on the draw.
That would probably take both of you out of the naming rights.
What, what, sorry. She get out loud? Okay.
So the way, and again, I apologize if it's written confusing, but number 1A says that if it's an elected or appointed public official or public employee, there's no requirements underneath that. The only time they have to be deceased is if it is individuals who, in council's opinion, have made exceptional contributions to the community by having met one or more, and there are six things that they need to have done in the, in the community, but that includes being dead for at least three years.
Thank you. You're safe, Charlene.
Thank you.
All right, so are you comfortable with?
I think Mr. Louise still has questions.
I, I'm not, I'm not sure we understand what's in this document, and I'm, I'm not sure any one of us fully understands. I, I would suggest that we probably go back and tweak this a little more to clarify.
I really do, because it's, it's sort of, even with the questions that Alan brought up, it's confusing. I think it, it needs a little more clarity.
If we can bring it back to the July Cal meeting. If we can bring it back to the July Cal meeting, if you all, cause we had one, we've had a couple meetings, but we can bring it back, if you wanna defer this, and we can just bring it back to the Cal meeting.
Not like, in a, that much of a hurry to...
All right, uh...
I make a motion to defer this to the July Cal meeting.
Second.
We good with...
You may wanna put it...
We don't, I had to withdraw the original.
Correct.
All right, we have a motion for Mr. Louise to postpone it to the July, uh, committee of the whole meeting. And a second, Ms. McGriff...
Wait, 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 hold on.
Clarification.
Correct. Correct. Okay.
Let's make that motion.
Let's, let's amend that motion to that.
All right, so, uh...
Repeat, repeat.
So what is the motion? First meeting after the, uh, July...
Cal meeting.
Cal meeting. And a second, from Ms. McGriff, you still good with that? All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval. Let's move down to first reading.
You might wanna explain to the office what a Cal meeting is.
Committee of the whole...
Not up here milking anything.
That's our workshop, uh, the third Wednesday of every month at 4 o'clock.
Second Wednesday.
Second Wednesday, I'm sorry.
This Wednesday. Sponsored by Chick-fil-A.
We got plenty of room available. Uh, let's move on down to first reading of ordinance 2023-1850 regarding amending the county code related to the position of the deputy county administrator. Do I have a motion? Most to approve.
Second.
Ms. McGriff. I have a second from Mr. Louise. Mr. Marshall.
Mr. Chairman, council members, I'm pleased to bring before you, the county code currently outlines a position of deputy county administrator. And, um, as we think about, we have a vacancy in this position, um, I'm asking just for a renaming only, to be titled assistant county administrator. And my rationale for that is that I have a different view in organizational structure within local government, that if you have a deputy county administrator position, it is considered a higher paying position, but also it has a higher flexibility throughout the entire organization, meaning it doesn't have necessarily many or any direct reports, but it works with all departments across the organization. So it is truly a second in command that helps work on council priorities and organizational goals. To have an assistant county administrator, and I've included the two org charts that kind of show how I would show the difference of where it would go in the org chart between a deputy and an assistant, I think we have those for the screen. But with the assistant county administrator, in our structure that I've walked into, is that this position does have a reporting structure to it, where it does oversee certain departments, meaning HR, Parks and Recreation, Risk Management, Information Technology. So it has some direct reports to it. And in many instances, it acts like a division leader, which is in our organizational structure. And so that is still, I think, in a useful model for us going forward. So I just really wanted to clear up the code, that I don't see this as a deputy position with no direct reports. I see it as an assistant county administrator with direct reports. It's been our common practice. And so this is just, in my mind, putting the title into our current structure of practice. And so I show, the current org chart up there shows the deputy. Right there is a second in command with has full, um, organizational structure to work with all departments. If you go to the next one, for the assistant, I would place that position right there, where it is still a little bit higher, does touch on some things, but it has basically a division director role as well, with the direct reports below it. And so that's how I would, um, structure this. But in essence, only a name change, no new position, and that's what I'd like to offer for your support.
Any questions for Mr. Marshall?
I just got a clarification question, cause I don't have a problem with whether it's assistant or deputy, but the previous person who served as deputy, John Wright?
Correct. He served as basically an assistant.
He was assistant?
Cause he had a division leadership.
Okay, so, what job duties were he, was he doing the job as, as a deputy or assistant?
He, a little bit of both. I mean, cause it has more of this hybrid, but he did not have the full reign of working with all the divisions across...
So you're trying to clear that up?
Yes.
Okay.
Cause I think some people, again, if you look at the organizational chart, has a deputy there, right there in the middle over all the divisions. In this one, it clarifies that it's over the, what we call the general services division.
Counsel, my, my concerns are, first of all, as we went down this road before Allison Alexander, I think we had it in mind that it would be a true deputy who would be second in charge over all department heads, including the county attorney. And so, it, I, I'm looking back on the last organizational chart that we approved, um, and, and it shows that. So if, if something went different between then and now with, with the past deputy, it was certainly, well, that was not council's intent. Because if this person doesn't have line of authority over the departments, then we, we could probably have a really low-paid assistant to, just to be the, the gopher for the administrator, uh, versus somebody that truly has the ability to step in if something were to happen to the administrator, but being an assistant...
No, we, we don't need a gopher. We need, we need somebody truly that if something happened to Dennis, they can step right in. It's like, um, and, and that's what I'm envisioning, that if Dennis is away on vacation, that person is in charge while he's away, and second in command, second, not third, but second.
That's what the deputy looks like in, in this chart.
And that's what we have. In the job description there, it also does list the assistant or deputy as a second in command. I mean, someone has to be designated that. And so the assistant would be designated that in the job description.
The way this is drawn out, the assistant is just over general services. So to me, if, if I'm the assistant, I would really be paying a lot of attention to general services, uh, and I, I wouldn't really be paying a whole lot of attention to the other divisions, which makes them less available to take over as a second in command if we really need it. Uh, the other thing I noticed is procurement has moved, uh, since our last...
He's looking at the chart.
Procurement was under general services.
He's looking at the chart.
March of 2021, our last approval, and I noticed it's moved over to financial services under this new chart. So, we're not approving the chart anyway, that's beside the point, though. But did wanna make that note, that our chart, last, last iteration was, that I have is March of 2021 that we approved, and it shows a true deputy.
So, uh, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, let me ask you a question. I'm, I'm looking at both organizational charts, the deputy county administrator and the assistant county administrator. Which one has more authority to do what needs to be done if you're not here?
I would say they both would have, cause it's designated, and also in your ordinance, it's designated in code that the deputy or assistant is the second in command. So they have that role, they can step in and do whatever. But under the structure, the deputy has the more latitude leeway to work with all departments, and they don't have, like we're highlighting, they don't have specific direct reports. So that allows them to do the organizational effort across, but I would say, if you wanna go with the true deputy model, then we don't have a general services division director.
Well, you know, cause you got the assistant county administrator, just like over general service, it needs to be right below you on this organizational chart.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is there is a difference in my mind, which is why I'm bringing this forward, is if we wanna go to the true deputy model, I'm fine with that, but I don't have a general services division director in that case. So we have been able, I guess, over time, again, this is something I inherited about the structure, but I think we're trying to maximize people and resources, that having the assistant with, or the deputy with some other direct reports, has been a way that, I don't know if it was an opportunity to fill in there for a little bit and have them do double duty, but it does take away from a full organizational wide perspective, um, when you have someone over a particular division. So, if you want to go to the full deputy model, I would then suggest we need a division leader for general services.
Well, but the deputy, I mean, on this chart...
Can still do that.
Well, they can't do both.
We, uh, takes all the departments, the systems getting restricted on this chart.
Right. Well, I agree. I mean, that's why I'm bringing this forward, is I think right now, there is a misunderstanding of how you want this position structured, and how we've been operating, and how our division structure for the organization has been formulated, does have a little ambiguity in it. The code is clear about the deputy or assistant is a second in command. There are outlined duties for that. But how we put the reporting structure to this position, I think is where I'm bringing forward to you, has been the issue. Having a top-level administrator as a second in charge with direct departments, five or six departments, that doesn't have, in my mind, the full deputy perspective that may be envisioned by council.
Well, I think that's what I'm envisioning.
Yeah.
Uh, is that, that they have the deputy county administrator's job duties, because that position can serve as the general service division manager. I don't see why not, unless it's some other job responsibilities that that person is doing that we are not aware of, because it's not like they're gonna be meeting with department heads every day.
I, the deputy could be meeting with department directors every day, certainly when we have 25, 32 departments, absolutely. But you're right, I think we've been getting a twofer bang for the buck with our current thought of having direct reports to the assistant position. So this is where I'm saying, I think the assistant position can go forward. I do need someone to be more hands-on with our general services, and I don't think the deputy is changing the title and giving the deputy the same reporting structure as the organizational structure that we need to be looking at.
You know, I think it's all in how you write that job description, and how you write the duties. You know, at least, if, if we needed a, a division leader, and that deputy director needs to serve in that capacity, we need to write a job description for our needs, because a lot of times you go by what, what is in a book somewhere, it may not fit. Sometimes you have to make it fit to our own purposes and our own needs. At first, I thought I, I was okay with it, but after I'm looking at this organizational chart, I'm not, I, I, I'm thinking that it's the deputy county administrator, because being over the general service, uh, division, and that's just me.
That's my, that's my opinion, too, uh, is let the deputy, uh, administrator take care of the general services division, that'd save him having to hire somebody, save his salary. Everybody needs a position on this chart to have some kinda, be responsible for something. Uh, and, and I think, uh, I know these, these other departments are under the deputy, but they still need a vital part of this, of, uh, of being over some, these, you got good people in these departments, they ain't a problem. I know everyone in these departments, they ain't no issues with any of them. These departments can run themselves. They can, he, they, if they got a problem, they can come back and ask that deputy county administrator. All he's got to say, yeah, yeah, no, no, whatever. So, I don't see a lot of work that he's gonna have to do with th, these great departments that we got right here. I really don't. I mean, you got good people that's running these departments, and it ain't gonna take a, a whole lot of work for, to hire somebody to put in there just to say, yeah, you come talk to me.
I think Mr. Biden is...
I see another salary coming in here, it might not be this year, a, a year or two, you're gonna be asking for, uh, a, a deputy at that time. Uh, if you get the, the assistant now changed, in a year or two, I look for you to be coming back asking, and that, you're gonna be doing both, so I'm not approving that right now. Somewhere down the road, we get a little bigger, need, I understand, but right now, it's, it's not, in my opinion, that we need that at this time.
I think, I think Mr. Biden was very involved in, I want to say, be careful how I say that, but there were some issues that he inherited that he had to, to work through. And, um, so I think the setup at that point in time was beneficial. And I can understand the reluctance to, to hire another person.
Yeah, this is not accurate.
Although, although we do have, just in development services, you also have, I think you have somebody that's basically doing dual duty there. You've got, they're headed development services, but they're also headed the planning department. So, I mean, we might, could look at that kinda structure as well.
Well, and to be clear on that one, there is a position for a planning director, but I think as you're all talking about, even the CFO. The CFO has direct reports, and they are meeting on periodic basis. Same thing with our public services, which is Public Works. They have a lot of reporting structure under them, so they have a lot of meetings that they're doing with their different departments. So again, I either go back to the model where you have a deputy and a division head for general services. We've just been kinda making this work where we have our division directors are actually also double department directors, and that's a lot of work in a growing county.
To Councilmember Blackman's point earlier, so, is this role, is the county attorney supposed to be reporting to this role as well?
No, that's stipulated in the code, reports to the administrator.
Even though on the organizational chart, it reflected that it did?
And I don't know, um, do you want to speak that?
Councilmember Louise, under home rule in the state code, the county attorney is employed by the county administrator.
So is all these people out here.
The code stipulates a position for attorney, and so I don't know about the 2021 org chart, um, how that was established, but generally, the county attorney across the state, in most states, doesn't report to the deputy. Um, I know in municipal, there is the opportunity where a deputy city manager may have oversight for the legal function.
So regardless of whether it was a deputy or an assistant, it would not report, the county attorney would not report to either one?
Correct.
Okay.
Even if you are away from your position?
What do you mean?
On vacation?
The de, uh, wait, whoa, was that?
At that point, at what point would the county attorney report to the deputy administrator or the assistant?
So your current code, as you have it before this amending ordinance, says, and even the one that's in front of you, the amending, just to change the title, says that in the absence or incapacitation of the county administrator, then all of his duties fall to whoever this person is, whether it's the deputy or the assistant. So even all of your leadership team, your department heads, everything, they would go to the deputy or assistant, whoever's assigned those duties?
But again, from what I'm hearing from council is, if you're looking at a structure, and I say, when people apply for a deputy position, it does seem to be a bit higher position in the organization with full latitude across the organization, that the compensation also is viewed as a higher compensation.
And we do understand that, and if need be, I think that's worth the discussion, but right now, um, I, I think a deputy county administrator would be suitable, but we don't need two, and I think that's the role we're gonna be headed down soon. But, uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking deputy county administrator, even if we have to pay that person more, but I think that's the position that I think I feel comfortable with.
And on the organizational chart, then, if you have the deputy administrators, one of the examples right there, right underneath the administrator on that top line, but you're saying that they should also then have the general services division duties?
I just draw them a line under.
Yes, yes, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
They have all of them. They're sharing the responsibilities with you, I think is what we're saying.
And, and if we're training a newest deputy or assistant director to take over if that position, if your position come vacant, they gotta be able to step right in. All the way they're gonna get that, that, um, exposure experience, is that they, uh, be second in command and know what every department is doing.
And that's why I'm suggesting this change, is that under the structure for a deputy, I think that's more practical to give them the organizational wide perspective. We don't have that right now with them having division line responsibility, where they are more focused and more consumed on the six or so departments underneath them.
We're gonna have to kinda make that happen. I see no other way than making it happen, because we, and I know we're growing, please understand what I'm saying, is that... happen because we, and I know we're growing. Please understand what I'm saying is that we just now got an assistant deputy person. But I guess the goals of this council was to get somebody second in command who can learn on the job, experience exposure, and be able to step right in. But the conversation is not going that way. And that's what, I don't know how you create that, but I think this is what this council is expecting. I might be wrong, but we've had this conversation before. And that's, that's what we're expecting, is that second person be over to department heads and learn as they, as they go. And I might be wrong. If I'm wrong, y'all tell me I'm wrong.
And I think that's fine structure. I would just suggest that maybe the next step then would be to evaluate a general services division director. If you want to make the move to deputy director and then deputy administrator, then that might be a consideration I'll bring for you later on.
I think that's worth discussing, discussion, Dennis, because of, we do county administrator and we see where we're going to need a division head. That's good, but that's down the road.
All right, any more comments?
Oh, I just, general question about HR. Does every employee have a job description?
Yes, or at least, yes. I mean-
And what higher requirements written?
Yeah, there are some like per band. I mean, if you're a clerk one or clerk two, is there one for the one in each department? It may be similar to one in a different department, but yes, everyone has a job description.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. If there's no other-
What was the motion?
The motion is to approve first reading of ordinance 2023-1850 regarding a bending the code related to the position of deputy county administrator.
Well, basically what we have discussed is, is the opposite of the way the motion is reading.
So we'll defeat the motion then?
Yeah.
We'll vote no.
You can defeat it or you can withdraw it.
Something else is presented that fits the-
Is it better to defeat it or withdraw it?
Which is best?
I think to withdraw it.
Or defer it indefinitely, or what's the word?
Did I have a motion to defer this?
I make a motion to defer. Wait a minute.
Go ahead, defer it to a date.
Defer it until, do I have to say a specific date?
No, ma'am, you do not have to. You can postpone indefinitely.
I want to defer it until the administrator can come up with something else after, something else better after our discussion.
And Chairman, that would not require a two-thirds vote for that because she's not giving it a specific date and time. She's giving it an event to occur.
All right, we got a motion for Ms. McGreev to have a second. You might have a second, Ms. McGreev's motion to defer. All right, so we don't have a second, so-
It fails.
Ready to vote on first reading of ordinance 2023-1850. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed likewise. We have first reading of ordinance 2023-1850 is defeated by a vote of zero, four, and seven opposed.
Mr. Chair, I got a point, a question for clarification. Attorney, what does that put us with this position?
You still have what's in your code, which is deputy county administrator.
All righty.
Let's move down to F, first reading of ordinance 2023-1851 regarding amending county code related to the residency requirement for certain management positions. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion for Ms. McGreev.
Second.
Second for Mr. Marstall, Mr. Marstall.
Mr. Chairman and councilmembers, as we are looking at the different positions for the deputy or assistant position, the county code currently outlines that the county administrator, the deputy administrator, and the economic development director all have to live within the county within six months of employment or accepting the position. As we're thinking about our growing needs in terms of having a competitive process for our applicants, we want to make sure that we have suitable interest in different positions, either for the economic development director or the deputy. So thought that there would be an opportunity, knowing that we're in the metropolitan region of Charlotte, there's a lot of interest in the county, but people may be in a situation, if they live adjacent to the county, that they may be in a house where they have an interest rate from seven years ago of 3%. And if they're only 10 miles away to move into the county, it could be a hardship to pay a 7% interest rate and find a new house or whatever it may be. But really just wanted to evaluate the, or evaluate their residence requirement for the deputy and the economic development director to give a little bit more leeway that if they live adjacent to Lancaster County, that they will not have to live within the county to meet the residency requirement. And that, again, is just to build our applicant pool. I know there's a lot of folks within the adjacent counties who would be good candidates. But also, we have a situation where some of our top administrators or our top directors live with outside the county border right now. And for them to be considered for a promotion or for the deputy or even economic development director position, they may not be interested because of the residency requirement. And so I think this just helps us grow our applicant pool, being in a growing metropolitan area. But again, realizing the preference is for people to live within the county. Certainly, I think it should remain for the county administrator. But I just wanted to add this as a more flexible way to grow our job applicants for the positions of deputy administrator and economic development director.
And what happens in the situation if they are coming from Tennessee? They have to move into county or adjacent county?
Correct. As the draft ordinance states, that unless they live adjacent to the county at the time of employment offer, then the residency requirement would be in place to live within the county. It's only if they currently live adjacent to, at the time of employment offer for those two positions.
All right. Okay, I'm in favor of everybody living in the county, even down to the lowest level. But in this case, as we have locked these positions in, not the others, I'm okay right now with the others. But I think we just simply say, if there's going to be an exception to the current rule, it will be decided by council. We get a, we get a person, an applicant in, Dennis has really sold on them, then Dennis has got to sell us that because of mortgage situation, family situation, things like that, he would bring it to us and then we'd make that decision.
And you didn't even have a conversation with me. I can't believe it. But-
Are you saying you agree with me?
I, I, I think I do.
All right. Don't feign out there.
Mr. Chair, just, just let me, you know, I don't have a problem with extending the time for a person to move into the county by one year. And even a little longer if necessary, and council agrees that, then they can't find a house or whatever. But I do want the three top positions living in the county. And I think if it's a current department head that's putting in for a position within this county, as Alan said, I think that, that should be a council's decision to waive the residency rights of that person or anybody else, as he said. But right now, I feel like those top three positions should be in the county. And I even went back and looked up in the minutes as to why did we even make this a requirement in February 2016, is when we voted on it and Brian made the motion and it was voted on unanimously that those three top positions live in the county. But Brian, you also said that you checked with surrounding counties and no other counties had these requirements. But we voted on it is when the economic development department became a department of the county is the reason why we made that requirement.
But that was 2016. It's now 2023 and things have changed pretty dramatically with the workforce. So I'm not opposed to them living in adjacent counties outside Lancaster County. Obviously, the preference is for them to live in Lancaster County, but you have to recognize that the best talent may not want to live in Lancaster County. They may be attracted more to South Charlotte or some other places.
You missed a memo that Indianland was South Charlotte.
It is. I'd much, I'd much love-
No, it is not.
-living in Indianland and South Charlotte, but I just, that's just a realistic-
I agree with Mr. Graham. I'm, I don't, I wouldn't want to limit our application pool. I think we will do that because there's a, I think there's a lot of talented people that live within 20 miles of our border that would make great employees, but they want to, they want to, they want to stay home.
I also think that we have plenty of people within our departments that should be given opportunities to move up, that we need to train them. We need to promote from within a lot more than we promote from without. And that is where I think right now, I don't see progress moving in that direction and that bothers me. But again, I say if he's got somebody outside that's really good, he can bring it to us. Call a special meeting, do it a regular meeting. I don't care which, but I'd just like to see us have a little more hands-on.
I'm just concerned that we might be overstepping our bounds as the administrator, council, former government, would you, do you mind coming in on that?
So according to the code, the council, county council does have the ability to develop personnel policies and so forth. So you can put personnel policies out there and parameters on certain things. But at the end of the day, whoever is hired in that position would answer to the county administrator, which is why you have codified some rules on these positions previously. But I do have some concerns from a legal standpoint about Councilmember Blackman bringing it before you for those, those conversations. That'd be hard to write into an ordinance. That may be something in a personnel manual that needed to be there because it may be a little bit harder to bring that before you.
I've got to disagree. If it says that three people have to reside in the county, except that upon approval of council, exceptions can be made. I don't know why that's hard to write in an ordinance.
Well, it might get into some of the comments you've had earlier about Councilmember McGreev's thing about useful life and so forth. What are those exceptions? Do we need to get into looking at what those circumstances are? That would be something that would need to be researched, is all I'm saying, to make sure we have those parameters with employment law and so forth to make sure they're in, so that no one can claim discrimination or any kind of problems like that. That's all I'm trying to say.
Okay. Then, then my position is we keep the three positions right here in Lancaster.
I agree.
That's just as simple. That's my vote.
All right, any more discussion? We have a motion on the floor, first reading of ordinance 2023-1851. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed?
Wait, wait, clarify that, what we voting on?
Voting to allow for residency from the adjoining counties for three positions.
No, no, I didn't, no.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed likewise. First reading of ordinance 2023-1851 fails by a vote of three, four, and four opposed. Let's go down. We have a public hearing in first reading of ordinance 2023-1852 regarding rezoning property located at or adjacent to 8918 Charlotte Highway from Light Industrial, LI, to Regional Business, RB, RB District. The applicant is C4 OP Owner LLC. Ms. Harding?
Do they need a vote before I start?
No, we got to have a, we don't have a motion. You do the presentation-
Yeah, and then we do it.
And then we'll do the public hearing. Then we have a motion.
Thank you. This ordinance that's before you is an application to rezone 28 acres off of Highway 521 near Possum Hollow Road. This is the property that is owned by C4 Partners as shown on the, or C4 OP Owner LLC. This is, the intent is to develop a retail facility with auxiliary, auxiliary gas station for the Costco project. The current property zone is Light Industrial or LI, and the proposed zoning is RB Regional Business. The location of the property is shown on the aerial photography on the left and shown with at least one of the photos on the right-hand side to show at the ground level. As you can see in the aerial photography, Possum Hollow Road and Hanover Drive are two of the roads that intersect 521 near this project. The McClancy facility is just south of it. And north of this property and west of the, excuse me, east of this property is the project called The Exchange. The Exchange was part of a larger mixed-use development. This property was brought in as part of the discussion. The 130-acre mixed-use project of The Exchange did not include the 28 acres that's shown in the yellow outline on the map on the screen, but it did promise during that time to hold the property as Light Industrial for future development. There's a development agreement with this, with The Exchange that indicates that at such time as the applicant and the council want to come together and agree upon a rezoning for this property, that that would be, that would be the way to achieve that. If you approve the first reading of this project, or excuse me, of this rezoning, then that would be a step toward achieving that. But the development agreement does require that there is a writing, there's an agreement in writing between the county and the applicant that this would be amenable to go to from Light Industrial to the Regional Business. There's multi-use, multi-family residential units that are planned as The Exchange that are within short distance from the Costco property, easily reached by bicycle or golf cart or even walking for some of the neighborhood. And then the proposal, there's a proposed intersection at Possum Hollow and 521 that will enter into this area. The development agreement, as I said, it acts as the guidance for the overall Exchange project. And this one, the way that it affects this is that the development agreement does say that there needs to be an agreement in writing in order to change the zoning of this 28-acre tract. The comprehensive plan, the Regional Business District is consistent with the neighborhood mixed-use, future land use category for this property. Regional Business is defined in the UDO as shown on the right-hand side of the screen, located on a major thoroughfare in the community and provides opportunities for provision of office, service, and retail goods to meet the surrounding region. Surrounding area zones are predominantly Regional Business, mixed-use, and Light Industrial as well. When this went to Planning Commission for public hearing, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the rezoning with that condition that I mentioned, that a written agreement to resolve the development agreement be in place before the third reading.
All right, any questions?
Why hadn't the development agreement, why does it have to wait till before the third reading and why isn't it prepared now before we vote?
I'm not sure why it wasn't done prior to this, but there is always the opportunity to do it before third reading.
I know, but third reading's a really bad reading to do because it was very seldom it changes the third reading.
Correct. Between now and your third reading opportunity, you also have a two-week period where you don't have a meeting in the beginning of July. So there's ample time for the applicant and the county to come together and sign an agreement to allow this to be rezoned.
I just don't like even first reading without all the information presented.
Has the developer for this property received any incentives from the county or proposed incentives that they're going to receive for this property?
Not that I'm aware of.
The developer is not?
Not unless there's something done earlier when the MX was approved, but no, not.
Okay. So they will be paying full taxes- So they will be paying full taxes on this property?
As far as I know.
And what are the proposed incentives that the residents of?
They'll be paying full taxes.
And what are the proposed incentives that the citizens are going to, or the county's going to get as a result of the tax value?
Taxes.
How much?
Not quite sure. Depends on the sales. The facility is proposed to be at least over 100,000 square feet with a regional pull for sales and high, high salary jobs in that, in that facility or that line of work.
So what are the proposed sales?
Not quite sure.
So we don't know what the benefits are going to be?
Of a Costco?
Of a Costco.
I don't know the numbers, no, sir.
Okay.
The developer can speak to that.
Mr. Donald, yeah. Mr., somebody from Cross, Mr. Dunaway, would you like to make a?
Hey, good evening, Chairman and Council. Thanks for letting me speak. Yates, Dunaway, 319 Heathwood Road. I could address Mr. Graham and Mr. Luis's question, so I guess I'll start with Mr. Graham. So the CCNRs that Ms. Harden mentioned, Light Industrial as it's currently zoned allows for a lot of uses, some that at the time the Exchange was approved, the developer us, economic development at the time, and the council thought were sort of noxious uses like a recycling plant we could have put there. So we, even though this parcel was not part of the rezoning, we included in the development agreement some restrictions so that we couldn't do those noxious uses. And so I think the logic for not bringing it up now, and we could have, is that if the petition doesn't get approved, those noxious uses will remain, or the disallow of those uses will remain. So, but we, we can bring it before second, second reading if we were to get that far. There's no reason necessarily to wait until third.
Okay, well, that's good. You know, like I stated, I like all the information at first reading, for instance, as a traffic impact analysis has been done and as a result.
So?
Yes, sir. The traffic impact analysis has been provided and staff is reviewing it.
But we don't have it today?
We have it, we, so there's a, the draft, the draft TIA is in process and we would expect the county review and SC DOT review to probably be complete, I would guess, in the next 30 days.
And you know, it's, and it's not just this application, but I have this, I have this issue with this for every rezoning, that we're not getting all the information at first reading. So on what basis do we make the rezoning? And we also know that you're in an area that traffic is the number one concern, which I know that everybody is aware of. So that's the number one thing that determines whether I vote for or against the rezoning.
So I can answer that question. The reason that we don't ask for traffic impact analysis every time at the upfront for the rezoning is because once the property is rezoned, the applicant can then go off and do something completely different as long as it's within that boundary. We don't allow in the state contract zoning outside of a planned development district. So we could, we could have a long discussion here about the benefits of Costco and all of the great things that Costco could bring to the community. And at the end of the day, if the deal fell through, they would have a rezoned piece of property they could go to someone else with based on all the other recommendations or the other regulations that are there. So that's why when we're talking about it, we'll talk about whatever information that we have, like the traffic impact analysis has already been requested, the DOT has turned in their comments, the staff is looking at those comments. We're working on that as part of the development process. But with or without that traffic impact analysis, if the property is rezoned, they're not held to this development or that traffic impact analysis or any development in the future. The current zoning as well would also have development rights that would then have a traffic impact analysis that council wouldn't have any access to because they already have development rights on that site.
I'm perfectly well aware of it because it's called a concept plan, and concept plans I have railed against since my time on council.
We do the best to get you the information about what is intended.
I understand.
And the best laid plans.
It's not your fault, it's just my, my comments.
I just wanted to clarify in case anybody from the public or anybody watching was wondering why we don't do more of that upfront because we really can't by state law, but we can, we can provide the information the applicant has given to us.
Ms. Harden, I think that's part of my concern, is that when we rezon these properties, there is no assurance that it is going to be developed the way that we've been advised it is going to be developed. And that is my biggest concern.
The way that we could handle that in the future is not tell you anything about what's coming and just ask for the rezoning based on the list of all the applicant options in each zone.
And the way we resolve that is we just deny it.
Yeah, I can understand that, no.
So this, Mr. Luis, I was going to answer your question about taxes. So Ms. Simpson will probably bring this up here in a little bit after Ms. Harden finishes her presentation, but one of the punchlines on that is from a property tax standpoint, it's estimated to be about $1 million a year. And then the total sales.
Say that again, please.
A million dollars in property tax revenue. And we have some ancillary, you know, backup, so you guys can look at the calculation. And then a conservative Costco would do about $200 million a year in sales. So 200 million when you factor in the capital projects tax rate and the county tax rate, what will be shared here shortly is just under 2.6 million on top of the 1 million in property taxes. So call it 3.6 million in annual tax revenue between the two.
All right. Ms. Harden, is that your presentation right now? I mean, we'll, are you ready for public hearing?
Sure.
Wait.
Unless you have questions, yes, sir.
So could this property develop a Costco without doing this rezoning?
No.
Is there enough, there's not enough room on the site?
There are.
For the remainder, for the remaining property?
There are prohibitions in the LI that don't allow it and in the development agreement that would be conflict with the gas station.
In the 28 acres, but they have, do they have 130 acres?
130 acres is different. It's an MX.
Right.
And so they have the zoning to do what they need there.
Correct. So can they do the Costco in the MX district?
No, sir.
They cannot?
No, sir.
Okay.
All right, we do.
They can't do it because there's not enough space?
Because of the setbacks in the site design requirements and the master plan that needs to go be changed.
I was just a little slow on the draw on that one.
So they can, it's just how they want to develop the site? If it was, if Costco was the only item that they want to build on the MX site, could they do that? Would that site accommodate a Costco?
I don't believe so, but if you give me a couple of seconds, I can look it up.
The council has already approved a master plan on that MX site. Let's go ahead and have our public hearing. Each citizen's allowed up to three minutes, just like in our citizens' comments. So we have one sign up. We got Mr. Reed Wilkerson, Mr. Wilkerson.
Councilman and Chair, I am the neighbor of the proposed Costco. I own McClancy Seasoning Company. I own that property outright. That is being leased to McClancy Seasoning Company, and it's the only other light industrial property that you've got left. I have three reasons that I do not want this Costco. First of all is economic benefit. Everyone wants to talk about the taxes and the $200 million worth of sales tax, and I'll talk about three different things. The economic benefit to leaving it the way it was intended to be. The second one is the environmental questions that I have about the site itself. And the third one is everyone's pet peeve in Indian Land, the traffic. First of all, economic benefit. Light Industrial creates high-paying jobs, potential C-suite positions, CEOs, CFOs, production supervisors in my case, I've got plant managers, I have people that are in all stages of setup, of in quality assurance. These are typical jobs that occur in Light Industrial. And Light Industrial is a very elevated use for the land. This is the last, the last part that we've got left. It's the only, it's the only piece we've got left. Economic development has consistently told me that this property was not going to be baited and switched into retail, and that in fact has not happened. Environmental, I looked into buying that property. I looked at it, it's full of springs, it's full of, I've got the maps. I passed on the property because it had springs on the property, it had a number of streams, stream beds. Basically, I rejected it. And as a food manufacturer, it really concerns me that they're going to build a, what they called a retail place of business and ancillary gas station, which I'm seeing plans for 24. That's a, that's a truck stop. Come on, guys. You know, also, you've got a Costco that's going to come in there and they're going to, they're going to ask you for a liquor license, and you've got two businesses down there already that people come into Charlotte. Closest Costco is 15 miles from this site. Everybody in North Carolina, seven and a half miles closer to this location, will shift their business to this location. I've seen estimates of 10,000 cars a day. According to your own traffic, it's 37,300 automobiles are going from 160 to the state line every day. This would increase it by one-third. Somebody asked me if I'd heard that Indian Land was getting a Costco, and I said, no, Charlotte's getting a Costco. I'm just getting another traffic light and more Charlotte's traffic. Thank you.
That, thank you, Mr. Wilkerson. That concludes our citizens' comments, and I am looking for a motion to bring this matter to the floor.
So moved?
Second.
Have a motion from Ms. McGriff. Second from Mr. Ross Taylor. All right, comments or questions?
Can't do it in the MX because of the design standards. General commercial is allowed, but everything else that goes along with it is counterintuitive to what Costco would like. Thank you.
How so?
How so? And the design requirements to go up to the street, to keep parking away from the front of the building and to put it to the behind of the building, to have the building face the main street and have a door in the front and the back, those kind of design standards.
So it's design elements that Costco would not like?
It's design elements that they would not be able to achieve with their desired floor plan and site plan. They, at the Planning Commission meeting, they discussed that there is, there's a type of customer that they target, and they know their customer, and they know how far the customer will walk and where they will and won't walk to. And that's what goes into their site planning.
I guess that's, that's my concern. There are certain design elements that Costco wants, and we're trying to adjust to that rather than having Costco kind of adjust to what's currently there and what we can currently use. And I've worked in retail quite a bit, and you can make certain changes. You may not like them, but you can make them, and they may cost you a little more, but you can make them. And my concern is that what's happening in Indian Land is we do these accommodations and we don't get what we really want.
The following applications are also about design standards, and you'll hear that more later on today.
Yeah, but that, and that's also my concern is, what if we don't approve all these design standards and rezon this thing? Does Costco come or not come?
That is better answered by the applicant.
Well, applicant, can the applicant answer that question?
I was going to say no. So I'll try and address both of your comments and concerns. So just a little bit of history, specifically Mr. Luis for you, but also I think it would kind of help all of us kind of remember the, how we got here. So when I came before council about a, about a year and a half ago, two years ago, Costco was not even on the radar. And we had an agreement with the council, with economic development, to keep this parcel as Light Industrial and rezone the rest. And at that time and today, we could fit, I want to say, and I can pull it up, I'll share it with you after the meeting, maybe up to 250, maybe 300,000 square feet of light industrial use. That's what it's approved for today. So, so we can build something on there, just, just not a Costco on the Light Industrial. So because, you know, a lot of times Costco is kind of the first tenant or user to a big development, everything's kind of else is planned around them, this, just the way it evolved is the opposite. So even if we wanted to put a Costco in the MX area and they could conform to the design standards, some of that property's been sold off, some of it's been leased to tenants, so that ship has kind of set sail. And I will say, and to Ms. Harden's point, you know, there has been a lot of discussion between the applicant and staff as well as Planning Commission about things that we wanted that staff pushed back on, and we've, we reached compromises really on everything except for one item, which we'll talk about today. So I think I'm, I'm here, you know, kind of on behalf of Costco, but I think they've tried to meet in the middle. And I also think from a built-in Regional Business, which is the zone that we're going for, they're not really asking for, I mean, you'll hear today what relief they're asking for. They're pretty much complying for, willing to comply with almost everything that code reads.
But they got the parking, they want relief on the parking out of the highway corridor.
So they actually want, yeah.
But that'll come, that'll come in the next line item, right?
Yeah, but that's what I'm concerned about. What if we, if we approve this rezon and then we turn around and say, no, you can't do your parking relief?
Should we, should we maybe then make them, I mean, the agenda to reverse the item so you can address that concern?
You've got three ratings on.
I can help with that.
I'm just trying to help, doesn't matter.
I'm just trying to understand it so that we're not automatically saying we're going to rezon it and then we're going to calculate to everything that's asked.
We're flying, we're flying blind on this. We don't know what the traffic impact analysis is. We don't know that it's going to be built for exactly what we're being told it's being built for, and yet we're going to approve this. And when we do traffic impact analysis, it does not include the existing uses or the proposed uses that are in place. You're only looking at the current uses of what's happening right now. So everything that we just heard about that is being developed potentially on that MX site is not going to be included in that traffic impact analysis.
I believe that the MX designs that have been approved to date were included on that traffic impact analysis.
So the existing retail uses and the uses that were?
Anything that is on the plan and has been done, I believe that it's so.
Hi. Nice to meet you. Michael Wicklon, Design Resource Group, 2459 Wilkinson Boulevard in Charlotte. Traffic engineer, did the traffic study. We actually included the full amount of the total traffic that was assumed via the previous TIA, which was much more conservative and probably higher than what's going on currently on the master plan, as well as the Somerset subdivision. Basically, any approved development that staff had indicated is coming in the, you know, the next five, six years has been included in term, in addition to growth rates and standard to try to look at it as a cumulative impact and taking into account any improvements that have been made by other developments. So, you know, if there was a development that had to put in a turn lane or a traffic signal, we include those in there and build upon that versus being double committed for the same improvement.
That would be fantastic. It's unusual, but that would be fantastic if that was included. I'd love to see that traffic impact analysis report.
Also, I wanted to know, when you do your traffic impact analysis, do you look at the traffic impact analysis on intersections that are further away from the current Possum Hollow area? For instance, do you look at the impact on the Dobby Bridge?
As a part of this traffic study?
The last one I heard was that they said the Dobby Bridge was so bad that it didn't, wasn't worth doing an impact analysis because they couldn't improve it.
So basically, when we come in, we don't just pick the intersections that we look at. That goes through the county and SC DOT process, and they say, you know, here's your area of impact based on their experience and what they need to see where we know problems are. And we look at it basically as, as an impact or a delta. And we look at it basically as, as an impact or a delta. So we would assume in, in six years, how bad is this intersection going to be or how does it operate? And then we look at with the site traffic added on top of it and there's design parameters and we have to mitigate so that it's within allowable increases or, or no increase based on county ordinance. So for this one, we studied seven intersections on the corridor from Marvin Road all the way down to Dobie's Bridge, actually. And that was the requirement of the county and the state.
I'll be interested to read the traffic impact analysis. Will we get, will we get that before second reading?
We can provide that to you, yes, sir. At the whatever stage it's at, I'll be happy to give you the draft.
If it passes tonight.
And that was something I wanted to add on. If you pass first reading of this zoning, but you don't pass the readings of the, of the subsequent text amendments, then at second reading, you can deny this. If, if, if that's, do you understand what I'm saying? If you, if this rezoning, if you want to pass this forward for discussion purposes and get to the rest of it, and for whatever reason, you don't come to an agreement on the other items that Costco is asking for and you deny them, then when this comes up for second reading, you can deny that.
Is there a way to get all of these in one ordinance?
Well, no, not, not all of it. We've got the text amendments can all be mapped together. We handle them separately in order to help with the understanding of the impact of each one. The rezoning is a different type of action. A rezoning is a zoning map amendment where the UDO amendment is a text amendment. They're handled differently in the state.
So you could do the rezoning under one, but then do the others under another one?
You could, yes, sir.
Okay. And then have you looked at the environmental report that was referenced earlier?
No, sir. Because no matter what is zoned there, something has a right to build. And we'll do that at the technical review part. Whenever it comes down to putting a site plan on the, on the ground and the civil plans come forward, that's when we look at that.
Yeah, but if we know that there's a problem right now, I mean, this might be a moot exercise.
There's a wetland there and there's, there's floodplains on that east side. And there are wetlands and floodplains and lots of other properties in this county. And we have ways to deal with that. The site planning will be adjusted for that or has been adjusted for that. We'll get the wetland letters as long as we can get the right thing based on the Supreme Court ruling of the last couple of months or last month. And then the floodplain management rules are you can't build in the cert, the floodplain areas without certain accommodations. If there's a floodway impact, which I don't, if I remember correctly, this isn't the flood, floodway property, then you have a limitation on how much rise you can have for that. We go through all of that with the technical review part to make sure that this doesn't go forward if it's not capable of meeting all the other codes. That's part of what staff does is to make sure that anything that, that wants to go, anybody that wants to build on that lot has to go through the same review as everybody else to make sure that we're not creating a problem down the road.
I, I'd like to get a copy of those reports just so that I can see them.
Sure. Anything that I've got, you can have a copy of.
What did you say the planning commission, did they vote in favor or what was?
They recommended approval. It was not a unanimous, but they did recommend approval.
Five to one.
Five to one.
We only had six at the time. We have one absent at that meeting.
And was there any citizen spoke against it or for at that meeting?
I don't, I don't recall that anyone spoke for or against, but I can go back and check the minutes. My apologies. That should have been in the report.
Just curious.
Oh, yeah. We had lots of calls about.
It has created debate in.
We had, we had lots of calls about people saying, when are you getting the Costco? Not, are you getting the Costco? But we had to remind them it has a process to go through.
Yeah, and there's a lot of confusion that's being approved, but this is the first, I tell them it hasn't come before council, but I have to tell them now it has come before council.
And after council, if, if it is approved, and that's an if, it still has to go through the civil site plan review and the traffic, traffic impact analysis review and all the other reviews that staff has to put it through.
Well, can you put a note on there? We don't want any more traffic lights.
Sure.
Good luck.
Noted.
You approve this? Good luck.
Mr. Chair, I've got a.
Go ahead.
Of all the years I've been on council, that's probably one of the most asked questions that I get. When are we going to get a big box retailers in Lancaster County? Well, we don't have to drive to Charlotte. We don't have to drive to Rock Hill. We can stay here in Lancaster County. I get that and I have for years. I have, get that every day or not every day, but subsequently every day. But also steakhouse, that's another one that everybody wants to hear. When we going to get a big nice steakhouse? You know, people, our people is wanting stuff like this. They want, they're, everybody I talked to is wanting. I've talked to Indian Land people. I've got a lot of friends in Indian Land. I've got family in Indian Land. Everybody that I've talked to is supporting it and wanting. But, you know, and, and, and I'm all supportive.
I, I live in Indian Land and I, I don't think people don't want development. I think the problem is they don't want it right now. They want to understand what the risks are, what the infrastructure is going to look like, what this is going to be in five years. And we cannot give them that answer. And when we keep on developing sites like we're doing right now and impacting that particular corridor of 521, we are going to have a significant impact and we are not ready for that.
Well, let me tell you, those people that you're talking about would be the first ones at the door when that place opens.
Probably.
The problem is, will they be able to get there with the traffic?
We, we won't be able to get there.
Mr. Chairman, may I add one more thing in? Because there were questions about what development was included in the traffic plan. The, ooh, where'd it go? The plan that's shown on the right-hand side that shows the multifamily and the, the really bright blue area, which is a commercial area in the future, all of that has been, been through the beginnings of the review process. And so that was all included in the traffic impact analysis, to give you a mental image of what was included in the report.
On that, on that particular project, since it's adjacent and I assume it's similar to the light industrial, were there any environmental concerns or anything on that portion?
On the exchange?
Yeah, on the exchange.
The exchange also has some water areas. If you'll see the, on the right-hand side of the map, it looks like a, a blue creek that comes down and comes around the edges. That's part, that's on the exchange and had to be dealt with as well.
You say dealt with, was that mitigated or did they do some?
Adjust, the design has to be adjusted in order to accommodate.
Sorry, I'll just make one quick comment since both of you gentlemen have brought it up. So the, the whole project, including the light industrial, is 150 acres. That's how big the two tax parcels are if you put them together. About 90 of it is developable because 60 of it is creeks, wetlands, streams, et cetera. So there's still 90 acres you can do, you know, you can do with, but can't develop the whole thing because of wetlands and.
Yeah.
Can we call for the vote, Mr. Chair?
Any more discussion? All right, I think everyone has had their say. We have a motion on the floor for approval of first reading of ordinance 2023. You want to say something?
No, I was just telling Ms. McGriff I didn't have anything to say.
Okay.
You didn't want, you don't want Costco in East Springs?
I do. We would love to have it in East Springs.
Call them for the vote on first reading of ordinance 2023, that's 1852. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, likewise. First reading of ordinance 2023, 1852, passes by vote of six, four and one opposed. Let's move down. We have another.
Mr. Chairman, if, if it be the will of this council, would y'all like to take about a 10-minute break?
Yeah, that'll be fine. 10 minutes.
I'd like to call this meeting to Lancaster County Council back to order. We are now down to item 8H, Public Hearing and First Reg of Ordinance 2023-1853, Regarding Amending the Unified Development Ordinance, the UDO, Regarding Section 4.3.2 of the Highway Corridor Overlay District in the applicant's C4 OP owner LLC. Ms. Harden.
Yes, sir. Long time no see. So, this is the first of... Okay.
Adam Twill.
This is the first of several ordinances that accompany the resigning that you just talked about for the Costco project. This is the first one. This is the one where the Planning Commission ended with a vote of three to three, split, so that it does not come to you with a recommendation from the Planning Commission. This is the ordinance that asks for... The applicant is asking for... To be excluded from some of the sections of the Highway Corridor Overlay. As relevant information to this application and to the ones that follow is that all staff recommendations, if there are recommendations, were based on the comprehensive plan that is currently in place, the 2014 to 2024, and the Unified Development Ordinance 2016 with all edits. The current comprehensive plan assigned a neighborhood mixed-use pattern of development for all areas north of Highway 75 to the state line, which includes this area. The current UDO Incorporated Regulations to Implement Neighborhood Mixed-Use Design Standards in the Indian Land Area and Surrounds. And Neighborhood Mixed-Use Design allows for a mix of residential and commercial in a way that elevates pedestrian design to a priority on par with vehicular use. That is all relevant to the discussion that we're coming up upon. That's why that slide is up here first. To remind you, we are talking about a project that is proposed, a Costco project, proposed on 521 at the intersection of Hanover Drive. There is a proposed exchange or interchange with that neighborhood. Possum Hollow Road is to the north, McClantzy is to the south. This is the draft site plan that the applicant provided for review and for incorporation with the text amendments because it explains why they want what they want. On the site plan, you see the Costco building is on the bottom of the screen. Highway 521 is running parallel to the left side of the image. Creek Bed Drive, which is an internal road going into the exchange development, is on the north side of the site plan. There is a connection to Possum Hollow Road through a frontage road going from Creek Bed Drive up to what will be an extension of Possum Hollow Road across 521. As you can see where the Costco site is located, there is parking between Highway 521 and the building. The site plan also does not have the building's door facing 521. It faces Creek Bed Drive, and there's a corner door on that side. And then up in the upper right-hand corner, kind of under where the DR is for Creek Bed Drive, that is a proposed gas station area. On the right-hand side, you'll also see some looping dashed lines. Those are the areas of environmental impact from the creek and the other areas that go into the flood zone. And you can see that the design standards for the parking lot, the building, and the gas stations are outside of those boundaries. Okay? I'm going to move forward if that's okay with y'all. What's the squiggly line there? I believe that that is the end of the creek bed and part of the area where the stormwater infrastructure would be incorporated into the natural infrastructure. Am I wrong with that?
Yeah, I think what Mr. Graham, your point, so there was a hand-dug pond when this was a pasture from the family that we bought it from, and so that was an old... I don't know if it's intermittent or not, but a water source to that cow pond. It's no longer there, but the other setbacks to the right still do apply for the streams coming off Six Mile... For the stream coming off Six Mile Creek.
Permission to go forward? Thank you. An overview of the ordinance that they're asking for exemptions from is the Highway Corridor Overlay Zone, or we call it the HCO. The purpose of the Highway Corridor Overlay Zone and any of the overlay zones is to manage certain environmentally sensitive or visually important geographic areas. The Highway Corridor 521 is visually important. It also extends on 160. Certain overlay districts have been established to impose design, use, or other standards in addition to the requirements of the underlying base district. The Highway Corridor Overlay is one of those overlays. The background for this is that the Highway Corridor Overlay was established to preserve and enhance corridors that serve as major gateways leading to, from, and within Lancaster County, that both commercial and residential land uses exist along the corridors. There is a desire to provide standards relative to connectivity, aesthetic appearance, and safety along the major gateways. The land use recommendations and design requirements contained in the Highway Corridor Overlay District are a result of community-wide effort. There was public input into these regulations before it was adopted, and as such, the intent of the district is to provide unified land development regulations promoting a sense of place and creating consistency along significant corridors by improving the visual character of the adjacent development. So, the applicant's proposal was to ask for exceptions to the Highway Corridor Overlay District Boundaries and Applicability Section 432B, and then the Highway Corridor Overlay District Exemptions and Non-Performing Situations at 432D. I do want to mention that in your packet, the ordinance that is included for your review has two options, two alternatives attached to the ordinance. The first one is proposed by applicant. The second one was the one proposed by staff. There is a Scrivener's Error in the one that was proposed by applicant. When I was retyping this, I missed an additional section that was discussed during the Planning Commission meeting that was specifically called out by the Planning Commissioner who made the proposal or the motion for a vote, and that is to add in subsection 4.3.2.F.1.C., as well as 4.3.2.F.1.A. So, I wanted to make that note. Ms. Merk DePont has a copy of this Scrivener's Error to help correct that, and any motion that goes forward on this, we would like to ask that you add in, if you are going with the alternative one, that you add that in, in order to accurately represent what the applicant needs. So, the impact of this ordinance is to remove hospitals, medical clinics, and large-scale retailers from the following requirements. The Highway Corridor Overlay requires buildings to front onto a street, generally parallel to the front property lines. Buildings have front setbacks of no less than 50 feet. The way that we interpret that or the way we have been applying that is that you can't go any further than 50 feet off of the right-of-way. That is the extra space that we have built in there for 521's growth. And then, buildings shall have access from the front and rear of the building. To give you a visual on what that looks like and what it looked like before, at the north end of the county, you see the Walmart that is near the state line. The Walmart has prior regulations, so the building is all the way back at the property, and all the parking is out in front. Now, it also has frontage-out parcels, but typically, this is what the standard large-scale box retailer development is, is that the buildings at the back, the parking is all between the main road and the building. The current regulations are shown by the newer buildings that are just south of that, indicated by the second blue arrow, that shows that the buildings are up against the street, and at least 45% or more of the parking is in the rear. This gives a visual along the corridor that provides the motorists with an opportunity to see the building, to get an idea of what the building holds by looking at its signage and the like. Parking is in the rear. Parking, then, is closer to things like stormwater and the like, but we'll talk about that in a minute. It also removes hospitals, medical clinics, and large-scale retailers from the following requirements, that off-street parking would be primarily in the rear of the building, like I just said, and that to allow sideyard parking to occupy no more than 45%. This is part of the standard for mixed-use design, where you bring the building up to the road to help create a corridor of interest as well as traffic calming, and puts the parking in the rear. So, why do we do that? Why do we ask you to do that, or why do we ask developers to do that in this corridor and other mixed-use zones? Well, why buildings set near the street? There's ease of access for alternative means of transportation. For those people that want to take a bicycle, or their golf cart, or walk to other locations nearby, having the building near the street gives that pedestrian or that alternative transportation easier access to the building rather than having to go all the way through a huge parking lot. It provides extra visibility on the street. It provides the ability of the applicant or the potential customer to come down and see what's going on at the building or with the building colors and the size, and it's traffic calming. If you have ever driven in a place where the buildings are up against the street and you have one lane on either side, it has the effect of mentally challenging you to go slower. It provides a lot of things that are happening in your visual extent... Peripheral, thank you. It's a long night. Thank you. Peripheral vision is activated with every building that you pass so that it has the effect of slowing you down without having to put in things like traffic calming devices, additional intersections, speed bumps, and the like. So, the closer in that you can get, the more people have to pay attention to what they are. But why put parking in the rear? Parking in the rear is part for safety so that you can have access in a general vicinity. The traffic calming, because people have to come by the building and get into the parking area, they have a time period to slow down before they get into the parking area and start making their decisions about which stall to go into. There's buffering and screening. The buildings being up close to the street provide that buffering from traffic lights that will be shining through from the parking area, provide some screening for the traffic, and I don't know if you've ever been in a parking lot you may know, or where you've noticed that people have started emptying their car trash on the ground and like. It's not as much of an inviting experience as is when you have a building up front, and any of that can be handled behind the building, so you still keep a good picture up front on the road. And then, the parking is closer to stormwater. Parking is one of the big runoff sections for commercial entities. The parking in the rear is also closer to the stormwater, which is typically in the rear, and doesn't have to flow through a site or a building footprint area in order to get to it. So, those are some of the rationales that we have for those design standards in this corridor. Staff had no recommendation per se, but did ask or did offer some alternatives that might achieve some of the goals of the applicant. We noted that in the UDO rewrite, there's some interest in adding back in some parking between the highway and the building. I'm a former retail manager. I can tell you that there are a lot of times where I really wanted to have cars in the front so that people could see that we were open and we were active, and that motion of cars coming and going in the front creates a little bit of excitement, so I understand that. We made the recommendation of allowing two rows of parking to be between the highway and the building, and to put the rest of it on the side in the rear. We also talked about adding in additional extension to that 50-foot setback to add in 120 feet additional to that, to make it up to 175 feet for putting the building back. That 125 feet would provide those two stalls of parking along with the pertinent landscaping barriers, any of the extra tree plantings that would be necessary, and would provide additional space for widening of 521, which is something we all know that this will be coming down the road. And then, to allow for TRC to consider allowances for setbacks, to let the staff review the site and see if the setbacks need to be followed, more so or less so, depending upon where the parking is standard. The Planning Commission's motion to approve this died with a tie, so the The Planning Commission's motion to approve this died with a tie, so the Planning Commission presented the report with no recommendation. Staff recommended an alternative distance of 125 feet to allow for the two rows of parking. The applicant provided a site plan that showed that 125 feet, and it did not meet the requirements that DOT would have for the access point to 521 that they would like. So, going back to their site plan, let me explain why they said that what we recommended would not work. Where you see the big, big blue arrow that says Proposed Interchange, if there is an interchange at that section, then that means that customers could come in off of 521, and in that driveway between 521 and the building, the DOT requires a minimum of 250 feet. So, that's why the 125 feet, in addition to the 100, to the 50, totaling 175 feet, would not work for the site plan that Costco had.
Repeat that, I didn't quite understand that.
Yes, sir.
250 feet.
So, what we proposed was to add an additional 125 feet separation from the road for the buildings. Right now, you can't be any further than 50 feet off of Highway 521 with your building. We proposed to allow an additional two rows of parking between Highway 521 and the building that would, that would be accommodated by 125 extra feet of setback for that area.
Did you say the SC DOT wouldn't allow that?
SC DOT, they, they would allow that setback, but because this design has a proposed entryway off of 521, anytime you're coming in off 521 here in this area, you have to have 250 feet of stacking before the, the car makes a turn. If you can see in this proposed site plan where that interchange arrow is pointing, that area between the property line and where Costco, where a customer comes in with a car to Costco, they will have to make a decision to turn left or right, and that can't be any closer than 250 feet to the street. Tell me if I'm wrong. You good? Yeah. Okay. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I do read.
Well, I'm not a smart person, so I, you're gonna have to repeat it a couple of times to me.
Unless you need to. Nope. If y'all don't need any backstory on that, that's cool. But that is why they could not agree to our recommendation.
What are they recommend, what are they asking?
So, their recommendation is that they become, that they become exempt from those rules, that not only the large-scale retailer, but also the medical clinics and hospitals that might be built along this corridor would also be exempt from those rules. And that means they could put parking between the road and the building as much as they need, that they would not be required to bring the building up to the highway, they would be able to set it back, as was done in previous years, and that the building did not have to face the main street being 521.
You know, in some of the meetings we had, that some of the planning we've been doing, we're, we're talking about letting some of this parking come back to the front on some of these places.
Yes, sir.
That we had talked about doing.
Yes, sir.
And I like that better. I do not like to see a rear of a building, or a building too close to a road to me. Having some inviting parking places is my cup of tea, but...
And we heard that from the UDO input, and had gone ahead and recommended that we implement that as an alternative to fully exempting these reuses from the setbacks and the parking requirements and the frontage.
But can we, can we require enhanced landscaping as a compromise on this?
I'm not aware of any reason why you couldn't. It just wasn't part of the discussion.
I don't, I don't, I don't like the idea of just a big parking lot on 521 without any buffering. I'm more in favor of staff's recommendation of having some buffering and some parking at front, but not a big parking lot on 521. I think that's a terrible image for...
And as we said during the public meeting, staff has no dog in this fight. We don't have any interest in saying yes or no to any particular person. We had to look at this as a corridor-wide impact, and where, the other places it would impact, and we felt like that our recommendations were a good compromise for overall. It doesn't quite fit what the site plan is for Costco, but we had to look at the whole thing.
MUSC was talking about putting a hospital up there in the future, whatever, and this same thing's come up with it, that, that's the plan, that county ordinance don't work for them, the way hospitals laid out. And to me, I mean, I think we need to make exceptional, exceptions to things like this. We need a hospital up there, and if parking places is gonna kill us getting a hospital up there, that's, that's not too smart on our part, I'm honestly. Our people up there need medical facilities, and, and if they can't make that hospital fit the way the county says it's fits, I got a problem with that.
Let's go ahead and have a public hearing, and then if anybody wants to ask the Costco people anything they can at that point. No one signed up for the public hearing on the, on 2023-1853, so we'll move past that, and I'm looking for a motion to bring this matter to the floor. Ms. McGriff, Mr. Blackman.
Just to also let you know that there is a representative here from MUSC, and of course, the applicants are still here, if you'd like to talk to them.
Yeah, I would, I would like to know the, you know, why the 125 foot will not work.
Thank you. So, to address that, Mr. Chairman, the, the image on the screen shows Alternative 2, which is the planning staff recommendation. So, this recommendation allows parking between 521 and the building, but only two rows of parking. So, this is problematic for our use for a couple of reasons. One, it doesn't allow traffic, you know, to get off 521 and get into the parcel of land and safely make, you know, a left or right without potentially backing up onto 521. It also has too much parking at the rear of the building for, you know, Costco's sort of successful sales. You know, people buy a lot of stuff at Costco, nobody wants to go to that parking space at the far-right corner of the, of this example. So, if you go back to the Alternate 1, which is what we're requesting from exemption, this allows, you know, shoppers to get off 521 and to the building, and gives optimal parking for, you know, a nice shopping experience. I will say too, to Mr. Karn's comment about landscaping and, and kind of how this, you know, and I guess it might address Mr. Graham's comments as well, there's topography on this site, so the Costco building itself, which you can't really tell from this image, will actually sit down sort of below, or below 521. So, when you come in that entrance, you'll be driving downhill to get to the Costco. You'll still be able to see the top of the Costco, you know, from the road, but it's, you know, set back off the building, I mean, off the street. And we do have some sort of 3D images of kind of what that might look like, which I can share after this meeting, and also bring it with me to the next council. I was just trying to keep it concise, knowing there was a long agenda tonight.
I don't have commentary. I'm probably having comments for Ms. Harden. So, we've had other developers that have been built, that have built buildings along this 521 corridor that have had to follow the current regulations, and what it looks like to me is that we're playing favorites here. So, and that is a, is a big concern to me.
We have had other buildings built along the corridor under the current rules.
And the reason that we told them they had to build that was because we wanted to make it a walkable community, which made no sense at the time, but that's what we did. And now, we're turning around, and we're trying to get a big-box retailer, and now we're saying, well, except if you're a big-box retailer. Does not make sense to me.
I, I've had issues with the parking on the overlay corridor, because some of these buildings don't put their front up next to the road, they put the rear up next to the road, and doesn't look very good. And, and also, that whole corridor is a hodgepodge of, of, some buildings are closed, some buildings are not. But I thought that during the UDO, there was presentations that showed this, what your proposal, which is 125 feet with corridor, with some landscaping in front, and that's my vision for 521.
Anyone else have any comments?
So, just to review here, the 125 feet was acceptable to Costco, but it's not acceptable to you, to SC DOT.
Costco did not, also did not like the idea because of the need for the 250-foot. No, maybe speaking on your behalf. I apologize. I shouldn't speak on his behalf, but that was what we discussed at the meeting.
But SC DOT is the main driver here, I guess is what I'm putting, getting, trying to get at.
I would, I would say it's both. So, said differently, if SC DOT were to accept the Alternative 2, it would not, which we don't think they would, but if they did, it would still not be acceptable to Costco because too much parking in the rear of the building, and it just makes it more experience for their shoppers.
So, you're saying if we don't approve this, Costco's not gonna come?
That's my understanding, yes.
And while staff understands the concern, we had to evaluate based on the entire corridor.
You've got two alternatives. You have the, the one proposed by the applicant with the...
Additional Item C.
Yeah. Or the, the one proposed by staff, Alternative 1. So, I, I would need, I would need an amendment, or one or a, or one or two, what's the best way to...
Mr. Chairman, and Ms. Harden can correct me if I'm incorrect, the ordinance is drafted so as whichever one of these alternatives you pick becomes Exhibit 1. So, you would pass the ordinance, which, whether, whichever alternative you want, the applicant's or the proposed from planning staff.
Somebody has to make a motion.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion if we accept Alternative 2, which is 125 feet. Is that correct?
It does include the 125 feet, yes.
That would be my motion.
Mr. Chairman, the proper motion would be to approve the ordinance with Alternative 2, I believe is what.
All right, now, if, if that one fails, Alternative 1 passes?
No, sir, you'd have to make it, somebody would have to make a motion to move for Alternative 1.
Okay. So, we have a motion for Mr. Graham for Alternative 2, the one proposed by staff. They have a second. Forgot hearing, a second. Do I have another motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would announce that that died for lack of a second, that motion.
That died for a lack of a second, so do I have another motion?
I'll make a motion for Alternative 1.
I have a motion for Ms. McGriff for Alternative 1. Do I have a second? Second for Mr. Mosteller.
Can I clarify, what is Alternative 1?
Alternative 1 is the request by the applicant to be exempted from those sections, and if you wouldn't, if, if you would entertain the idea of adding in Item C in your motion, so that we can clarify that Scrivener's Error. So, what you, what it would do would be...
She agrees to that, Mr. Mosteller.
So, that would make it subsection 4 dot 3 dot 2 dot F dot 1 dot A and dot C.
And just to be clear, this Alternative 1 is what the Planning Commission failed to agree on, so it died during Planning Commission. So, Planning Commission did not approve this.
Planning Commission did not recommend either, yes, sir.
Can we also add in there that required for enhanced, I know this doesn't affect the Costco site because of what said, but there's gonna be other sites that'll be in consideration, that we have enhanced landscaping along between the highway and the building as well.
If you put it in for this application, then it will impact the Costco.
Well, I, I mean, it can go for this application, but I was saying because it's gonna be down some, it may not be as applicable there as it might be when we get up to the MUSC site.
Additional regulations, we can't, can the council, it's not at the UDO.
It's not before you, no, sir, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so we, we have a motion.
Could I question why it's not before us? Because we're considering this ordinance, and we can add to the ordinance.
If you're making an amendment to the ordinance, as long as it is applicable under the UDO for a text amendment, then yes, sir, you can.
Okay. Then I will make amendment to the, the ordinance that we add additional enhanced landscaping along the corridor for these, for this.
We'll need to come up with some parameters on how to measure that, and we'll bring that back to you at second reading.
So, we have a motion, there's gonna be a second to it, if it's going to move forward.
All right.
Yes.
So, we have another amendment for Mr. Karn, second for Ms. McGriff.
Do we have any signed ordinances in this one that we're making exceptions to?
Yes, sir, it's coming up.
It's another amendment.
The next one?
We're making all sorts of exceptions.
No, no, but I mean, in the original proposal, it talked about so many buildings, so many square feet for the sign.
Yes, sir, that's coming up.
Next, okay.
It's one of the three coming up, yes, sir.
Now, do we, now need to vote on both amendments?
The pending amendment is Mr. Karn's amendment to add the additional regulations regarding the landscaping. So, you need a second, I believe, Ms. McGriff, second to that, and then you need a vote on that first.
All right, we're ready to vote on Mr. Karn's amendment. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, likewise. Passes by five to two. Now, we're ready to vote on the amended motion. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, likewise. Passes five to two.
Mr. Chairman, to clarify for the record, that is Alternative 1 that you just voted on.
One.
With, with the Scrivener's Error included, that included adding 4.3.2 dot F dot 1 dot C, I believe it was.
Are you comfortable for a vote?
It's a Scrivener's Error, so yes, sir, I, I am comfortable.
Okay. And that's all we got to vote on?
Yes, sir.
For that one.
All right, let's move down to, we have another public hearing. In First Reg of Ordinance 2023-1855, regarding amending the Unified Development Ordinance, UDO, regarding Section 10.3, to add a definition for large-scale retailer. The applicant is C4 OP Owner LLC. Ms. Harden?
Yes, sir. This is a companion piece to the discussion we just had. In order to apply rules to, specific to large-scale retailer, we needed to find the large-scale retailer. The applicant had provided a definition. Staff reviewed the definition, also in doing so, reviewed all of the properties that are in the county at over 100,000 square feet. They're in orange on the map. A lot of them are located in the Lancaster city area, but there are some north of Highway 75. So, we proposed, the applicant had proposed a more specific definition, we proposed a more general definition with, using the only indicator being that the building has at least 100,000 square feet in gross area. And the applicant accepted that, and the Planning Commission recommended six to zero for that definition.
That definition would be 10 buildings at 10,000 square feet each?
A building of at least 100,000 square feet of gross floor area, so I would not interpret it that way, but we can place qualifier in there if you'd like, a single building.
I just think it's a very basic...
It is very basic.
And I'm not sure what the unintended consequences would be.
If you would like to provide an edit to that by saying a single building of at least 100,000 square feet of gross floor area, that would do well to narrow down the potential field.
You know, some of these... You know, some of these shopping areas, of course, the one that we saw the shooting in with all the stores surrounding it, you know, it may be, maybe 10 at 10,000 is appropriate, but right now, for the sake of our discussion, I do think we need to put a building instead of located in buildings, a building of at least 100,000 square feet.
I think that's a very good catch. Thank you.
All right. We do have a public hearing on this. Mr. Baker, I think, didn't you sign up?
He left. He wasn't feeling well, he left.
He left, okay. Well, no one else signed up for the public hearing, and I'm looking for a motion to bring this matter to the floor. Motion for Ms. McGriff.
Second.
Second for Mr. Mosteller. Discussion, amendments.
So what are we voting, are we voting on staffs? What, what exactly, or, or, what are we voting on?
We just brought it to the floors, all we did, we didn't-
Yeah, no, but, well, what are we gonna, what are we gonna vote?
Whatever you want to do, Mr.-
I want to?
Whatever you want to do, Mr. Graham.
I might want to go home.
Oh, well, not till we get through the budget.
And our other ordinances are, are previous conversations that refers to a large scale retailer, and I do not think a large scale retailer is in our definition, in our current U D O. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And we, we need to define a large scale retailer.
And staff-
Mr. Blackman suggested that we change the wording to a single building of 100,000 square feet or more.
And just to be clear, did you clarify that it was first floor area or gross floor area?
Gross floor area.
So it could be a two-story building of 100,000?
Yes, sir.
Did you, did you clarify it was 100,000 square feet or it was a building for a use by one?
It should be a building.
I, I, I would suggest that we go a little farther and say the re, the retail use must be at least 100,000 square feet. Because if you go with a two-story with 50,000 on the bottom and 50,000 on top, they could put-
It has to be both, both of them have to be retail in order to be calculated. Like Ikea has two floors. Not that Ikea's coming, please don't let that rumor get out. Please, Lord.
Why not? They could have all this parking area right in front right now.
All right, so for second reading, you can change the language and we're all right with that, the first reading. Is that, you're good with that?
Well, so-
Or you want to make a motion?
I want to go back to your point, though, I think a large scale retailer is a retail use located in a building of at least 100,000 square feet. So your concern was, what if the retail space was only 10,000 and the rest was dedicated to whatever, so-
Backroom operations?
We did discuss that at the planning commission workshop about how things like furniture warehouses will have 10,000 or 20,000 square feet of show space up front, and then the rest of it would be warehousing. That would not qualify because of the differentiation of the warehousing. A retailer has to be able to walk in, get the item and walk out, or walk in and order the item and get out.
But, but what, I mean, this, and maybe I'm getting too absurd here, but I still like what you thought about was, what, what if they took 10,000 of that square foot and made it general office because the retail use really wasn't there? So we got 10,000 that square feet that they're leasing out to CPAs and attorneys versus 90,000 square feet.
We would have, by the definition, the retailer is a retail use of 100,000 square feet. So the retail use-
Retail use located in a building of at least 100,000 square feet, should we say, retail use which occupies-
At least 100,000 square feet.
At least 100,000 square foot gross.
You could say 100,000 square feet of gross retail floor area.
Yeah, that-
While we pay you those big bucks.
That's right.
Good idea.
All right, we go forward. If it passes first reading, I think we can look, uh, look for those changes in second reading.
You could include it now if you want.
Or you want to cut?
If Councilmember Blackman wants to include that amendment now, he can certainly do that.
Absolutely.
I'd like, well, I'd like to make a motion that we change the, well, but let's see, we're going to change at least this ordinance, 2023-1855. We would define large scale retailer as a retail use, let's help me out here, Jose, located in a building with at least 10,000 square feet of retail floor space or retail-
Oh, that occupies at least 100,000 square feet of retail space.
What if they have 10, what if half of it is retail to the public and then the rest is storage, retail use?
Let me give, let me, let me give it a shot.
Warehouse.
So I would like to amend ordinance 2023-1855 to read, large scale retailer is a retail use located in a single building of at least 100,000 square feet of gross retail floor area.
Second.
All right, uh, we got an amendment from Mr. Louise, a second. From Mr. Blackman, any discussion on that? Any discussion on 1855? Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
You need to vote on that amendment first, Mr. Chairman.
Huh?
Vote on the amendment first.
Okay. Let's vote on Mr. Louise's amendment. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval. We're ready to vote on ordinance 2023 dash 1855 as amended. All in favor, raise your-
Are we, are we?
1855.
55.
55.
It's on the screen.
It's 55, isn't it?
55 is the large scale retailer.
You're correct, I hit the one down below there.
It's 1855, right?
I hope I got it right.
All right, 1855, all in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval, first reading. Public hearing in first reading of ordinance 2023 dash 1856 regarding amending the Unified Development Ordinance, U D O regarding section 7.2.6 dash A bicycle parking for large scale retailer use. Ms. Harden?
Yes, sir. In our U D O, you are required to have bicycle parking in two forms, short-term bicycle parking and long-term bicycle parking in these neighborhood area, in these neighborhood walkable areas and areas of alternative transportation. The, the intent of the chapter is to impose regulations that mitigate the negative effects of parking lots in Lancaster County, preserve the character of the community, and protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the residents. So why do we need parking for bicycles? There's increased bicycle use in recent years, gives customers and employees who might ride the bikes to the store a dedicated space away from vehicles for safe mount and dismount, avoids damaged trees, light poles, street tables, and other infrastructure, because if there isn't bike parking and a bicyclist comes in, they're going to lock it up on something. So might as well give them a nice, safe place away from the vehicles. The current code requires one space per 10,000 square feet for gross floor area with a minimum of three, and then for, for the short term and long term, one space per 5,000 gross floor area for long-term parking. We talked about it at the planning commission, that short-term parking is primarily going to be for customers, and long-term parking will probably be more for employees that need alternative operations to get to work. The applicant requested to go with three short-term spaces and none required for long-term. The planning, the app, the staff recommended that we go to the commercial uses of one per 10,000 square feet, but cap it at 15 maximum for the long, large scale retailer, and then one for every 50 employees on the long-term parking in order to accommodate those that might need alternative transportation to work. The applicant accepted the staff's recommend, or staff's alternative, and the planning commission voted on it five to one. I think the one vote against it wanted a few more spaces in the long-term for staff, but it went forward from the planning commission from there.
I've got a question. They don't have to put these bicycle parkings at the front door. I mean, they can put them out where-
No, they are required to be closer to the front door. The reason being is that you don't want a bicyclist riding through the parking lot and having more potential points of conflict with vehicles. They need a safe place to go up quickly and get to the site, so they are typically held within a certain amount of feet from the door.
Why are we having bicycle parking?
It's part of the walkability standards and the mixed use standards that are-
Who's going to be walking and bicycling down 521 to go shopping at Costco?
I don't know if anybody will be down 521, but they might come from the neighborhoods across Kane or the, the small street that's being built.
Costco. They're going to be shopping at Costco on a bicycle.
I mean, like, you're going to put that big okay-
This is absurd.
Wrap that tape, hook wrapped around her bicycle.
I understand the assumptions, but not everybody that shops at Costco shops in the same way. My mother goes just for the hot dogs.
And we do, we do have to remember that when 521 gets updated, that that will be a requirement, that there have to be a bike path along 521. In fact, this has to be, and I think an eight-foot bike path along 521.
The way we are developing Indian land, 521 is going to be independence.
He's requiring it. It's going to be, it's a separate path. So you're going to have the highway, then you're going to have a break, and then you're going to have a separate path.
Can somebody from Costco answer this question? How many other Costcos have bicycle parking?
Probably all of them.
My name's Eric Brand. I am director of real estate development for Costco. And the question is bicycle parking? Costcos? We typically will have three to five bicycle rack parking for employees. You're, you're correct, no one is coming to Costco. They might come to have lunch, but they're not coming to shop because the packaging-
Okay, thank you.
I would say something, but it would be racist.
All right, on this one, anything else before I have a public hearing? We do have a public hearing. No one signed up.
I've seen it before.
On this one, so I'm looking for a motion to bring this matter to the floor. Motion for Ms. McGriff.
Second.
Second for Mr. Blackman, any discussion? Hearing that, I think we're ready for a vote, all in favor, raise your right hand.
I mean, what are we voting on exactly? Are we allowing, are we requiring them to do bicycle parking?
Okay, I, I'm sorry. You don't have to speak.
Well, that's right, I didn't, I got to thinking about what I was going to vote on, so what am I going to?
Vote is to require one per 10,000 square feet of gross floor area, 15 maximum, 15 maximum. If it's over 100,000 square feet, whatever that measurement would be, but we'd cap out at 15. So if there's a building that's 150,000, that's the max that we would put in there.
So large scale retail is 100,000 square feet. We've just defined that, so it's going to be between 10 and 15.
It's, it's at least 10, 100,000 square feet. It could be larger.
Right, so, but it's, so at a minimum, we'd have 10 bicycle racks?
We on purpose didn't cap it at 10 because, not 10 bicycle racks, 10 bicycle spaces.
10 bicycle spaces, so at a minimum, a large scale retailer will have 10 bicycle spaces because it's 100,000 square feet by how we just defined it. So it's going to be between 10 and 15 bicycle spaces.
Right, you can get five on a, five on a bicycle stand, you could have three bicycle stands by the door or five each, that would, that would be the maximum that would they would need.
Do we need five more bicycle spaces for a large scale retailer, or do we just say it's 10 bicycle spaces? Are there more than 10 bicycle users at a large scale retailer like Costco, shopping for hot dogs?
The thing is, this is not going to be the only large scale retailer, so we have to look at those. Walmart is a large scale retailer, and people do make sure-
I shop at Walmart all the time. I never see someone in a bicycle. I certainly don't see 10 people in bicycles.
Right. Man, you know, we entertain some important stuff on this council, don't we? What are we doing?
I moved them in to do the five, four, five, or whatever their normal policy is for Costco.
I'm sorry?
Say that again, Billy, please.
Whatever their normal, like he said, they have four, five for people coming there to eat or something.
I don't know, it would be, that would be, each city they would be in would be different.
Besides, this will not be only Costco's application. This application will be applied to any large scale retailer in the highway corridor overlay district. So that could be a Walmart, that could be a Target, that could be a, if a Trader Joe's came in, if an Ikea came in, whatever it would be.
At Walmart, I've never seen a bicycle there.
No, I'm sorry, they're not coming, sorry.
I would like to make an amendment to ordinance 2023-1856 and just state that for a large scale retailer use, it would require 10 bicycle short-term spaces, period.
How about, how about the, for the long-term? None for long-term?
It's be 10, period.
Okay, I'm just asking, thank you.
No, thank you for the clarification. Yes, that's it.
I assume we're talking about motorized bicycles or regular bicycles? Come on, hold on.
If that spoke would go in, that's a bicycle, not a motorcycle.
An e-bike is a bike, not a motorcycle.
What about unicycles?
All right, Mr. Louise.
If you can chain it to a thing.
He is proposing an amendment to change the, uh, the maximum from 15 to 10. It's correct.
It's, it's the only, it would only be 10's bicycle spaces.
Do I understand correctly, you'd like to have none in the long-term column?
Correct. Just, just 10 total.
All right, do I have a second on that?
Who's actually going to decide if they long-term or short-term?
Mr. Blackman says-
If they come in there to go to work, or if they come in there to run in there to get a sandwich, who's going to determine long-term or short-term?
Short-term parking is typically at the front door, long-term parking is typically at the entrance for the employees if they don't go-
That was going to be my question.
Long-term in the back. So that's a long-term parking could go in the rear.
Yes, sir.
Well, we have a motion on the floor.
They have an amendment.
Well, we, we have a motion to require 10 short-term spaces. If, if a retailer wants to put in 50 long-term spaces, it's up to them.
All right, we have a motion for a min, a minimum of 10.
A requirement of just 10.
Just 10. Okay.
If they want to do more, they could do more.
On their own.
It's just a requirement for 10, minimum-
I know Costco feels good about that, thank you. All right, and Mr. Blackman, do you second that?
Second, yes, sir.
Any discussion on the 10 park, parking place? I think we're ready to vote on Mr. Louise's amendment. All in favor, raise your right hand. It passes by unanimous approval, seven to zero, and we're ready to vote on first reading of ordinance 2023 dash 1856 as amended. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval. Let's, uh, move down to public hearing in first reading of ordinance 2023 dash 1857 regarding amending the Unified Development Ordinance, the U D O regarding section 7.4.5 related to signage standard by category. Applicant is C4 OP Owner LLC. Ms. Harden?
Last one for Costco. And this is an application to expand the signage that would be allowed on a wall within the highway corridor overlay district. As you can see on the screen, there are purposes for signage regulations, improving traffic and pedestrian safety is one to minimize adverse effects, is another to enable fair and consistent enforcement is important as well. For the impact for this, this does not address medical clinics or hospitals. It allows for signs. The request originally allowed for signs on all four buildings and allowed for the relative square footage or- and allowed for the relative square footage, your 2.67 billboards per wall. Because the Lancaster County Code allows for up to 150 feet for a billboard, and the request had been 400 square feet per wall on all walls. The Planning Commission request was, what does that look like in relation to other large-box retailers in Indian land? So we went through and did a visual survey. For the purposes of briefness, I did the least amount and the biggest amount in the corridor. Aldi has the smallest signage. Lowe's Home Improvement on Fort Mill Highway has the most signage. Neither one of them meet the 400 square feet per wall. 400 square feet, for reference, is a digital billboard on Highway 17 in Myrtle Beach. The staff recommended half of what the applicant asked for, understanding that large walls do need scale, and sign needs to be at appropriate scale for large walls like the 100,000-square-foot buildings. This would allow them to take that 400 square feet and parse it out to the main signage and any signage above the door, et cetera. The applicant did accept the proposal, and so the Planning Commission recommended unanimously to go with the 400 square feet of wall signage for large-scale retailers on two walls.
So just to clarify, is that 400 square feet on each wall or on?
400 square feet on each wall, 800 square feet total per building. That is half of what had been requested.
All right, any more questions for Ms. Harden?
On, on two walls, he said?
Yes, sir.
I assume that both those walls are going to front the, front the, one of them is going 521, I assume.
And the particular site plan, they would be able to put it on any four, but I would assume that it'd be the ones on 521 and on the entry road coming out of the exchange where the gas station is.
All right, that's fine. I was just curious because on the discussion of parking lot, they said the parking lot was going to be down low. I guess Costco's going to be up high.
I don't think so, but we did take into account that the scale needed to be appropriate so that folks could see it.
All right. See the sign for Aldi? Why can't they see the sign for Costco?
That's a very good question.
It's the same sign.
Aldi's.
Not the same size, what I'm saying. They can still see it for Aldi.
Aldi's closer to the road at this point.
What about Lowe's?
Lowe's was facing the side highway, not facing 521. So it's facing Fort Mill.
I know it faces 160, but.
What's the size?
100, I think it was 500 square feet total.
800 square feet is a pretty big sign.
If it was one sign, then yes, I agree with you, and I would have had a heart attack. But it's splitting it up between two walls.
400 each sign.
Pardon me, sir?
It's 400 square feet each sign.
Yes, sir.
Is there going to be monument signage here? Is it allowed?
Yes, this only addresses the signage on the walls. It doesn't address any other signage that's allowed in the code.
So there will be directional signage to let people know where to turn for the Costco?
If it's allowed in code, yes, sir.
Is it allowed?
There'll be a sign out available, or signage available on 521 frontage. I'm not quite sure about the small directional signs like arrows. Don't have that memorized right yet, but I can look it up.
But for someone driving down 521, they'd be able to see it without having to look at the building to see? Because I would imagine they're looking at the road signage and not trying to find building signage because that would be dangerous.
For this particular applicant, they're also proposing a traffic light at that entrance off 521, which would also get attention.
Yeah, I, I would be more comfortable with a 500-square-foot sign in the front of the building, just like Lowe's does.
All right, we do have a public hearing. No one signed up for this. So we will move past our public hearing. I'm looking for a motion to bring this matter to the floor. Motion from Mr. Mosteller. Second from Ms. McGriff. Any discussion? Hearing none. I think we're ready to vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed likewise. First reading of Ordinance 2023-1857 passes by a vote of six far and one opposed.
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. That concludes Costco. Now.
Kill the second reading.
Kill the second reading.
I, I assume everything's going to go on the non-consent agenda for Costco.
Yeah.
It's against the rules for y'all to leave. Y'all have to suffer through the rest of this with us.
It can't go on, it can't go on.
That's that second reading.
They already got what they wanted.
We might, we might make a motion to reconsider. So you better stick around.
My water bottle is empty.
Fine, bring me one.
Anybody else want water?
I do.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
You think we need more?
I need the AC a little colder.
I got one more thing for the developer for Elise. If you would, petition the county and have that creek bed road name changed, please. That don't sound too good. Y'all building that big million-dollar place up there and got a creek bed road running through it. Creek bed.
You, you can't do it.
I'm not going to bet you.
Right. I can make some big money. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Put that on my charger.
Let me know when y'all ready to start back.
I'm ready.
The sentence, can we keep moving?
Sure you say move quickly.
There we go.
We still got a crowd here at 9:15.
Still awake.
Second reading of Ordinance 2023-1849 regarding approval of the fiscal year 2324 budget. We need a motion to, to get this on the floor to start with.
Motion to approve?
I heard the same time.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. McGriff and a second from Mr. Carnes. We get into discussing our budget, I think there's some items that the council has already talked about. And someone may want to make some amendments. We have talked about $50 per day funeral home storage fee for the coroner's office, making a part-time deputy coroner position full-time, increasing the sheriff's office and detention center career ladder pool for sworn staff to 10% of current pay raise on, I think, in the budget is six and a half. Create a competitive pay hierarchy for the fire service and emergency management, which brings the minimum firefighter pay up to $44,045. Increase the pay adjustment for non-administrative EMS staff from six and a half to eight percent. Include cost of living increases for the solicitors and public defenders at six and a half percent to keep them equivalent to county employees. And add 228,000 for administrative renovations as an additional project to be paid for with fund balance. If somebody wants to start some discussion on one or any of those or make an amendment, if y'all want to get some of this out of the way to start with.
And Mr. Chairman, as you go through this, so the motion, second reading of what was drafted. So then we've had conversations that he just highlighted. So to start that conversation, what's on the table is just really what was first reading. But since you've had these detailed discussions, we thought that those were, that it, look at.
My only, my only question is, is everything included here from my discussion at, at our, was it the council, the whole meeting?
We had a, we had a budget workshop was our last discussion on the budget.
So everybody that came forward, he said that they were okay, they were pleased. That is still an effect?
Correct. That represents what the chairman said, a 10% overall increase for the sheriff. That is the fire rescue new pay structure, the minimum pay, and it moves the EMS staff up to eight percent, and the rest of employees receiving a six and a half percent increase, plus the new position for the coroner.
Cost of living, 6.5 across the board?
Correct.
Other than the ones that we, you just mentioned.
Yes, and part-time employees would also receive an increase.
Oh, I'm sorry. What I, what is new here is that we did increase soliciting public defender from 6% to 6.5.
Right, we wanted to clarify that.
Change.
Correct.
And the 228,000 administrative rent.
Copy's down at the other end of the table.
No. Yeah.
Correct. We had, actually, we did have.
Billy needs one. I gave Jose mine. So give Billy a hit. Okay, okay. I, I just want to make sure that all that we discussed last time is included, and you made a couple of additions.
Correct.
Did, did we have a conversation about EMS staff, non-administrative staff to 10%?
That was not the last discussion. We ended the budget workshop at eight percent for EMS. That was the last conversation.
I think this is a starting point based on what we had talked about. If we want to change any of this, then that's what we're, we're open to discussing now.
Well, one thing that bothers me, and, and I think Mr. Louise has started on it, is create a competitive pay hierarchy for fire and rescue, emergency management, which brings the minimum firefighter pay to 44, 045, which I have no problem with that. But it, we, we're not looking at amounts. We're not looking at millage. We're not looking at anything other than, I feel like I'm at Walmart going through the shelves with no price tags on it.
I think that's going to be the next question because that was going to be my next question with.
I beat you.
Well, you weren't supposed to.
Sorry.
With these adjustments and this recommended amount, how will it affect our meal? How many mills will it increase from the last time? You have that on there?
We do. We have that. Nope, keep going. Yep, keep going to the end. Keep going. At the very end. Right there. So Ms. Belk, am I correct? Is that?
This is actually from first reading, that presentation.
From the budget? Okay. Because we said the millage then is 4.6, is that right?
So.
That's the first point.
To make these, to make these changes, it was as presented at May 31st. So the total millage impact would be an additional 1.8 mills, which would take the operating up to 90.3 mills or a six-mill increase overall versus what was proposed in this first reading version. And it also increased the court security an additional tenth of a percent to 3.9. And then, of course, we already had the half, the half a mill increase in the capital improvement fund. So with that debt decrease that we've had and we presented at first reading, you'd look at an overall increase of 4.1 mills across all funds.
Okay, 4.1. Now also, we did give an example of a possible $300,000 home. What would the increase for property tax on a $300,000 home? Just to let folks know, you know, the parameters.
We did the example on a $250,000 home. And owner occupied was about $20. And then if you had two cars, it was like an additional 5.75. So you could say $6 for 250 with, with two cars.
Okay.
And that is just for clarification with the credit factor updated. I don't, I don't know if there was confusion last time about that, but.
All right, well, I'd like to make a motion that we, because, because this isn't telling me anything. I think we were at 10% for the sheriff's department. I think we were at about 15% for fire and rescue, or fire, fire group. But then we were at 8% for EMS. I make the motion that we go to 10%, 10% for EMS.
I second.
Does your, does your motion include this with the change of EMS?
I think we're going to have to do these things one-on-one, Dennis.
So you're going to start EMS as what you just said first, or you're going to start the sheriff first?
No, well.
We got to vote on individually?
I don't have, she gonna do it?
We're trying to do this as a bulk, if you wanted, if you were to do that as a bulk.
I don't know what this is. I mean, shit, I can't vote on that.
Well, I don't have a dollar amount for a 10% for EMS. So I don't know what that impact is right now in the millage or what that difference is between the 8% and the 10%.
Okay, well.
You know what the value of a mill is, so.
And we also should know what the percentage increase per person is, and we should calculate it real quickly here.
What was the difference from the eight and a half, whether it's six and a half to eight percent?
We already talked about going from six and a half to eight percent.
I know, I'm just saying, what, what's the difference on that one? Because then you can kind of get a better idea of the eight to the 10.
And on the sheriff's office thing, I, I have an issue with his 10%. And just giving him two deputies, he asked for four and 14%. We know when you're close. I mean, everybody else is, y'all have hit their numbers on what EMS asks for and fire and stuff. But sheriff, it was at 14%, and he's getting 10, and we're cutting two deputies, too. He don't have enough to fill a shift with two deputies that we're hiring. He really, these four deputies.
For a full shift?
For a full shift, if we're going to add. The county's growing. I think we, we done growed into a full shift. I mean, I don't know how we can justify just putting two deputies out there. I don't, I don't think that's going to help our problem. We need another man on every shift.
I, I think the other issue we've got, and I, Mr. Willis brought this up this evening, and I had already thought about it, is if we don't start allocating detention center officers for the new detention center now, we're not going to be able to do it whenever we have to do it. Even if we just allocate the spaces and sheriff can't fill them, at least they're in the budget, and we can build upon that as we go forward.
I agree.
And that would probably be approximately a mill by itself.
I would prefer that we wait. I mean, if you're going to hire detention officers that you don't need for two, you're, you're looking at two to three years.
Yeah, but you're already, he's already down to detention officers, so he needs two already. So if we give him four, then at least he's moving in the right direction. Again, it's, it's more of a, a budgeting and getting it in the budget process than necessarily is hiring the people. Because at some point in time, we're going to run up against the wall against our, our ability to increase the budget to be able to accommodate these things at the worst time, which is when we need them.
You know, which is why I've said before, we need to have a pro forma, five-year projected budget, too, so that we know certain things are coming on. We know certain things we want to come on, maybe, until we vote on it. But we plug it in and we realize we can or cannot afford it.
But y'all, we, we're on our second reading, and these are some discussions we need to have at a, at a meeting of the whole so we can plan for next year. We don't need to wait till January and start planning. We need, we know what our problems are. We know what our concerns are. We need to start dealing with them right away. So when we do come to budget time, we're going to know exactly what we want. Because this is not the time to, to build another budget. And I, I do. And I, I do, I do like the recommendations about increasing EMS, the sheriff, but I'm talking about bringing in any additional.
But the, the time is now if we're gonna do it, because we don't want to do this when we get to third vote. So if we're gonna talk about doing extra things, we can do it now.
I'm saying if we're gonna talk about detention staffing, that, we're gonna need additional information. And we're gonna need to do more than one mil.
Well, then, then maybe what we need to do is make a motion to schedule that, that meeting that we've been talking about doing. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we move the consideration of the budget to a called meeting. I don't know if next Monday is good. I hadn't even checked my calendar for when it's a good.
No.
As you consider that, there is one parameter that we do have to have, a distance between the second reading and the third reading. And so the latest date that you could do that would be Monday, um, June 19th. So that'd be the last day.
A week from today.
A week from today. You have to have that in then before the third reading. There has to be seven days.
The, the issue with that is I think at least two council members will not be present. Well, we gotta get staff time.
Yeah.
Is, is there any way Friday?
I'm, I was supposed to be on vacation today, but I'm here, and I'm certainly not inclined to be here on Friday or Monday of next week.
Well, you get down to four on Monday, and I, I would rather, with something like the budget. We need more than four council members here.
So Brian, what is it that you want to, you were wanting to put on the agenda for us to discuss?
It's not, not only what I want to put on the agenda, we've already had the discussion already about how many meals is this going to be? How many meals is that's going to be? And we don't have the answers right now. So I would rather put this meeting off till when we have the answers, so that we can discuss it intelligently and, and not be sitting up here for the next two hours saying, well, I think it might be this, or we don't know that, so we can't really talk about it.
For clarification, you're talking about how much each one of these recommendations is gonna cost, or what?
How much more it's gonna cost than what we already know it's gonna cost.
Um, any more than 4.1? Uh, is that the?
So what I need clarification on is just what other than what's on that list? Because that list is taken care of with the 1.8 mils that I already talked about. So whatever above that, I just need to understand what else y'all are looking at. Like, you mentioned corrections officers.
And that's my question.
I just don't, I'm not following exactly what we're looking at.
And that's my question. What else is Brian looking at other than what's on this list?
Two deputies and the correction officers. Four correction, and two deputies.
What tags the 1.8 for this? What's, if the budget, if we looked at the whole budget plus what we got here, what kind of millage increase are we looking at already?
And we're also talking about moving the 8% to 10% for EMS, so.
That'll be 96,103 more dollars.
So what we're saying is, we have identified, our last discussion would be 4.1 mil increase. If you want to talk about two new deputies, four correction officers, and the EMS increase, we don't have that, but we'll certainly be glad to get it.
So we're already looking at 4.1 plus 1.8?
Under current proposals that was last discussed at the budget workshop.
It's four, 4.1, so.
Straight across.
Right, so not 4.1 plus 4.8.
Plus, nothing.
If you guys do those changes, it's gonna be a.
It's 4.1.
4.1.
Which we're at right now.
It's gonna be in addition to.
Senator officers, do you, do you need four, what, what, what are, or two, Barry, what, what are you needing now? I know you need two de, two more deputies. I said, I know you need two more deputies.
Yes, sir. I, I mean, for us to add one, I, I mean, we have to hire four.
Right.
And, and you heard, of course, what Steve said earlier about the detention officers. Keep, keep in mind that the, the Association of Counties, they come in to a staffing analysis, and that staffing analysis is based off the 121, what is, what the jail's currently built to hold. Well, our daily average now is a little over 200, way above the 121. So, so to say that we're only two short is really a little misleading, because we're, we're over 200 as our daily average. And it's, you know, the rated capacity that the Association of County gives for the staffing analysis is based on the 121. Does that make sense?
No, I guess I'm a little confused. Why didn't we have this discussion at the county meeting or the first reading?
My original budget, you know. He had it in his original budget.
I know, but I wish that, you know, we called everybody up and, at the last one, and everybody seemed to be happy with what they got.
We've had these discussions.
I know, but we, we, we hadn't done anything about it.
This is very much what was.
Discussed. I know, but now we're hearing more.
He was asked about the 10%. He was happy about the 10%.
I approached Barry. He didn't approach me.
One of your council members brought that up.
Fine, I'm, I'm not criticizing. It's just frustrating that it's coming up at the second reading and we're under the deadline. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying it's not justified or anything.
He asked me, you know.
Well, where are we, Mr. Chair?
There's still a motion, right, that Mr. Blackman had put in?
I made, I made the motion to amend that, and, and, and I think we ought to vote on it. I think we ought to, we ought to vote on all these other ideas that are in addition to this. And then staff's got to prepare this stuff, uh, give us the cost of it all. But we gotta, we gotta all agree, agree, agree with this.
Can, can we, can we do this? We voted on that 10, that 10% for EMS. And that's gonna be, that's gonna be additional $96 and something, if my, is correct. Can we vote on that? And are we gonna have a meeting before our next meeting chair to decide on the two deputies, the correctional officers?
My concern is that there's a possibility it's gonna only be four people here. Next Monday.
The 19th.
You'll be out of town.
Yeah.
You'll be out of town Friday.
So can we vote on what's in?
Friday, will six people be here? Will you be available, Mr. Louise?
Can we vote on his?
Yeah, we have to be later in the day.
Four o'clock on Friday?
Four o'clock on Friday? Oh, no.
I will not be available four o'clock on Friday.
There's also Thursday, Thursday, on Thursdays, any different?
Thursday?
Thursdays, any different?
What, what about Thursday?
Thursday, I, not. I could, if I can make an adjustment.
Remember, we got to make a decision, because we don't like any, anything added on third reading.
Thursday, we're gonna have Boardman or Dier dinner and, um.
I mean, you, you're just looking at a couple of items. I mean, I think there's a general agreement on a majority of this, but there's several items that are in question.
There's a bigger elephant in the room, and, and there's no way I want to go with six mil increase in the general fund. I think we need to direct staff to bring us a list that will cut our budget. We know these things we want as a council. Some, there's some other things in that budget. Mr. Carnes, I think, did a lot of research this weekend. I did two weekends ago, uh, that needs to be cut in order to get this millage down for our citizens. And, and I'd like to see a list of things that they would recommend we cut to get one mil down. Add to that some more cuts to get two mils down. Add to that to get three mils down. I'd like to see some sharpening of the pencil. In private sector, there's two things you think about, how to increase your revenue and how to decrease your expenses or your cost. And we have never done that.
And I totally disagree with you about going in and do a revision on what has already been presented to us. That means that what was recommended to us by the Finance Department and Dennis, we are going in one by one and doing our own revision. Whatever you revise, I may not agree to that. Whatever Brian revised, I may not. That is nitpicking a person's budget. We don't do that unless we do it on a group, and it's too late in the season to do it.
I'll stay here till midnight and do it tonight, right now.
No, I won't.
I would too.
No, I won't. I won't be here.
I, I would say that, you know, that the staff and administrator put the budget together, but it's the citizens of Lancaster County's budget, and we are elected by the citizens to make sure we get the best budget possible.
But you wait till the last minute to do it.
That's because we started this whole process in the last minute. This whole process started late.
This budget to death, and you just now on the second reading, bringing up a revision, bringing up things that's not included. We should have had this discussion a month ago.
I, I think Mr. Councilmember Blackman has brought this up multiple times. I think he's talked about the pencil sharpening.
List that he was supposed to bring.
But that's not his obligation.
I know it, but he's the one that brought it up, saying he had a list of questions. I hadn't got any questions from you.
Well, that's good. I'm glad you don't. But I, I, I think if the rest of the council wants to, if you want to sharpen the pencil, now's the time to do it.
I don't want to sharpen it.
Otherwise, otherwise, you're gonna impose the largest millage increase on our citizens probably in 20 years.
And even at four and a half mils, it's 20-something dollars. And if our citizens don't understand that we have growth and taxes are gonna go up, we're living, we're not living in the real world. Because we all know our taxes are going up if we're gonna grow, and we gotta know that.
I do, I do have a concern, because we're saying the millage is gonna go up six, but we're basing that on the debt millage going down four, so it's really going up 10. So my concern is the following year, how are we gonna pay for all this stuff?
The, just for clarification, the six is just in operating? So what I'm, when I'm saying overall, it's 4.1, that number is the one that takes into account the debt decreasing. Six is just in operating. Do you get what I'm saying? So.
No.
So, so. Yeah, six mils is just the general fund. 4.1 is taking into account the decrease in the debt. So overall, across all funds, you're looking at an increase of 4.1. But just on operating, you are looking at an increase of six mils right now.
So.
Where I guess the amendments are made.
Yeah, but my, my concern is, unless we keep growing, we're not gonna be able to sustain it.
I think, and to clarify, you're right, is that, um, the increase that we've talked about, we said is a 4.1 overall. And that's where we talked about roughly a $26 increase is based on that 4.1, because all the funds together is a 4.1% increase or $26. But you're right, going forward, the decisions you make this year will be.
Basically, as it relates to salaries and, and, and things like that, I mean, that's, and I, for one, am not optimistic about the economy or the growth.
Well, the, the decisions that we make going forward this year, you know, those are gonna be built into the budget at that point, whatever we decide to do. Now, next year will be the decision of where do we go from here? Because we'll be starting at whatever this year's budget is and going from there.
You know, we, we need to remember that. We want to do all these things at our budget, all the recommendations. But we gotta know if we're gonna do, if we're gonna make these recommendations, vote on this, it's gonna increase. Taxes are gonna be increased. I don't care how you nitpick through a budget. It's gonna happen. We may as well realize that we are growing county, and taxes are gonna be raised at some point. We've got to realize that.
And it, it is our obligation as, as county council members to look at it and, you know, if we can reduce that 4.1 or 6.1 or 7.1 or whatever we can and offset it by some savings, then we, we, we owe that to the citizens of the county to be able to do that.
Mr. Carnes, how much in your spreadsheet did you see that possibly could be saved in our budget this year?
There was a, about a mil and three quarters. I did talk to Mr. Marstall, and there were some things that I put in there that I probably shouldn't have put in there, so probably a mil and a half. And, and a lot of those things were, were like, okay, we budgeted $40,000 last year and the year before, and we only spent $18,000 one year and $22,000 the other year. So I didn't cut the whole thing out, but I may have took $10,000 out of that, that 40.
You know, my concern is when we, we, when you're, you're, we're looking at these and, and what you have presented, there's some stuff that's probably procured or that's not, would not be showing up in those numbers. Possibly, or.
The information you have from May 3rd showed expenditures in four months, yeah, four months for the calendar year, some of that. Since, yeah, sometimes expenditures come in at the end of the year. It depends. So there's some of that stuff you just have to weigh, what is the line item you're talking about?
You know, and for us to go in and pick budgets apart without having a conversation with the, uh, the budget, with Kim or the department heads is unfair, because we don't do this every day. We come and look at the budget, and we go in and nitpick and say, well, you don't need this. I'm, you didn't spend it last year. But they may spend it this year. So it's a conversation. This is not about me nitpicking what I think will happen. This should be a discussion among the Finance Committee, the Administrator, and Council.
Well, this is the start of the conversation.
On the second reading.
I, I think part of my concern is, we've looked at this when these items were presented in two PowerPoint slides with presentations that were about five minutes long. I think we probably should have been much more involved. I've said it before. We probably should have been looking at the Excel spreadsheets. We probably should have been looking at last year's versus where we are this year with a variance plus a five-year plan. I think how we've done this has been unclear from the beginning. And I think part of the problem is that we're looking at these numbers, and we're looking at these specifics, and we're looking at these details right now. And we're hearing from the community, and we're hearing the things that are needed that haven't been put into the budget. And I haven't seen any pencil sharpening in this budget at all yet. I think Mr. Blackman has mentioned that several times already, and we still haven't seen anything.
We need, if we're gonna do that, this is gonna require more than, is what, June 12th? Is gonna require more than, uh, to June 30th to get it done. If this is what we're gonna do.
But we keep meeting and we never discuss it.
We don't do it.
Well, I'm sorry.
Let's just have another meeting and say the same thing over again. I don't want to nitpick. And then, you know, we, we say we want to look at the budget in a strong way to make sure it's what we want.
Make it happen. It's, we are.
I wasn't willing to. Last meeting, I told you.
There's a motion, there's a motion on the floor about EMS and the sheriff's offices. Can we, can we vote on that one?
Let me make a, suggest, we, we've got to come to closure on this before our third reading. I, I hear the request, I think, from multiple council members about increasing the number of deputies from two to four, adding two detention center officers. Without getting into over a five mil increase, what's the possibility of adding four officers halfway through the year and two detention officers for the fourth quarter? That'll start the process of getting those in line and, and without busting our budget. I mean, it's an alternative. I, does that make sense?
I actually asked for four detention officers.
Huh? Do what?
I said, I asked for four detention officers.
But if you do that, you know, you're, you're setting yourself up for the next fiscal year, just like.
Well, I mean, you've, you've got to.
But I understand one thing, everybody, nobody, this whole budget process has been a disappointment to me, because we never look at our audit. We actually increased fund balance last year, the year of FY '22, $10,755,000. In the year '21, we increased it $7 million and, uh, $7,000,012,000. I skipped 20 for some reason, don't know why, where 20 is, but in '19, it was $7,540,000. That's, that's, that is called net income, or that's income less expenses. And that, after all we spent after the fact, we still had that much left over that we increased fund balance by. after the fact, we still had that much left over that we increased fund balance by.
And?
And I'm saying we need to look long and hard at our expenses. I'd like to keep maintaining that to a certain point, but that shows you how when we look at the budget and what we did and what we finally did, we had a surplus in our budget. And now we're going to surplus again big time this year and we're going to put it on the backs of the taxpayers. And when you talk about taxes are going to always go up, if I'm paying 60 cents of my dollar I make for taxes right now, when's enough enough if we pay another penny on people? It's only a penny, people. But then we're at 61, 62. How many years is it that all of a sudden you're going to be at 80% with your tax burden on your citizens?
And to add to that, this council has told this community that all the residential development that was going to happen was going to pay for itself, that we were going to have impact fees, that we're going to pay for the cost of fees that are associated with it. We haven't seen any of that. And we're now looking at a deficit based off of the growth and we're still approving more things. We have to look at our five-year plan and start observing that.
I don't disagree with you, Jose. It's just that this is not the time or place to do it. We need to start that in the new budget year.
So let's look, let's start with Mr. Blackman's review. Do you want to start with your line items? Let's just do it right now. We keep, because we keep kicking the can down the road. This council says it multiple times. Let's not kick the can down the road. This is the time. Let's do it now. We're wasting everyone's time.
I could vote on whatever is recommended tonight, but not with added stuff to the budget that we have not discussed until tonight. I mean, I can go with the 10% because that was talked about. We just didn't do it. But these line items, we can vote on them. And I sort of agree with Steve when he said, let's look at making some additions to correction officer deputies in the next budget, maybe the second quarter or January. I can live with that. But right now, we've got to deal with what's in front of us.
Well, when that detention center gets built, we need to already know based on this budget right here and just that one variable, what it's going to do to this budget that we're looking at for this year. We don't know that. And y'all want to build a park and the rec department's already told us it's going to take $900,000 for the small building in that park as overhead that we're going to have to add to the general fund expenses. But if we go with the 50,000 square foot big building, it's going to be 1.6 million. Those are numbers they gave us. I don't think it's, I think it's kind of high, but at the end of the day, we're not going to have enough money to run the budget with all these things we're building and doing and expanding if we don't start planning now and understanding the impact of our decisions.
When you say planning now, do you mean tonight or do you mean July 1?
I mean, July 1. I just want to get this budget done.
Yeah.
July 1. I can agree with you on that.
So you're going to meet on July 1? What time we're going to meet?
No. I'm going to be on vacation. No, sir.
I'll put my calendar, Charlie. Where are you going to be? I'll call you.
I won't be available.
You going to block his number?
Can we try to move forward? So does, I don't know if I can ask that.
Motion's on the floor.
The current motion is on the floor.
I'm in the budget.
It's been seconded.
Repeat that motion, please.
I don't think we have, we're not showing a second to the clerk over here.
I seconded it.
Okay.
What was the motion?
The motion was that we, instead of going at 8%, as we've got proposed right now, that we put, plug 10% in for EMS for their wage increase.
You seconded, right, Jose?
I seconded it.
Do we all agree that that's proper?
Yeah, we got to vote on it.
I know.
Let's just vote.
I'm trying to get chairman to vote, get us to vote.
Wait just a minute. I just want to.
Oh, we'll do that too, Billy. We'll do 10 there.
I just want to understand and make sure for clarity, because EMS gets paid a little different because they have so much overtime, the 8%, even that'll be 8% on overtime too. It'll be, it'll all, I mean, 10% on overtime. Okay.
I think we will add it to the wages line item like we talked about last time. So if they're making 19.63 an hour, we'll add the extra one and a half percent, which impacts our overtime.
Right.
Could we allow EMS to look at doing a career ladder with these additional funds that we've given them so that they can come back and say, you know, we've got, we've got paramedics that have been paramedics for 10 years, you know, let's plug them in at this cost. And we've got paramedics that are coming in off the street and because they're just coming in off the street, we're going to plug them in at this cost. And that way it builds a difference between the hardworking people that we already have.
What you're saying is giving Clay the 2% at his discretion uses a career ladder?
Well, I mean, we're giving them 10%. I think we could look at the whole structure right now.
I mean, the total, total cost.
I mean, we don't necessarily have to vote on that right now, but we know we've got the money that there that's available to do it.
Well, but July 1, that's when that cost of living is going to kick in for these employees. I guess that'd be another July 1 thing when I call Ms. McGriff, we'll work that out for you. But really, I think, I think that's something maybe working next year.
You're not calling me.
Brian, I like your idea. I mean, I think it's fine, but which.
I mean, we've got, I mean, we've got examples of how career ladders work. So I mean, there's probably going to be a lot of back and forth on how they're going to do this. But I mean, we've got examples within the county of how it's going to work. I don't think there's much difference between doing the career ladder in Barry's office and doing the one that we've talked about trying to do for firefighting and EMS.
The amendment is to increase it 10%. The career ladder discussion is a later discussion, right?
Yes.
Okay. Let's just make sure that's on the table for later.
Unless they use the 2% for the career ladder.
But that's not.
I think they got to do some restructuring for this.
Yeah, I don't think they read it like this. Some research first.
Call for the vote.
I'm sure Clay can figure out how to do it.
Call for the vote. Let's vote. All right. So we've got an amendment. Go over it one more time to make sure everybody's on the same page.
That we take the compensation of the EMS and we increase it by 10%.
To 10%.
To 10%.
Two, what, okay.
Two 10%.
We're already.
Up to 10%.
We're already at 8%.
Not two 10%, but up two. That's the motion.
And we did delineate medics from other staff when we did that eight and a half percent or 8%.
I believe that was correct.
Yeah.
What's the question?
When you say 10% for EMS, we delineated between medics, certified paramedics, EMTs, not administrative staff and non-certified staff. Make sure we're apples, apples. That's what we did the last round.
You did that at the detention, at the sheriff's office as well.
We haven't voted on it yet, but we'll do that next if we keep moving.
Yes.
Aren't you going to do one thing?
Jose seconded. We got a motion on the floor.
Otherwise, we're not going to ever.
We're going to do one at a time?
I think so. How else can we do it?
We've got a motion on that for EMS.
All right. I've got a motion to approve the adjustment on EMS to 10%. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And I got a second.
Yes.
And we're ready to vote on that. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval. Somebody else want to make another?
Let's start at the top. And I'll make a motion. He was getting ready to say something. I'm sorry.
So every time, because you're taking these one by one, every time, you're going to have to go back to the main motion, which is to approve second reading as amended each time.
Yes.
Unless you had taken these as a group or several of them at one time, then you could have voted on all those. You could have amended that. You can only amend an amendment one time.
Let me ask this question.
Into your own rules.
Let me ask this.
We're bringing up a whole different topic.
That's right. But you have to go back each time to the main motion on the floor. So as you just amended it, that's on the floor now. During that discussion, you amend it again. It comes back up. You add another amendment to it.
I'd be, I'd be in favor of us not truly amending the budget. Let's just vote on the issues without an amendment and then we'll have one big amendment that says we're going to do all these things.
Can't do that.
Why not?
You can't do it. Yeah.
Right.
Hey, what if we? Hey, Mr. Chair, what if we, we looking at this, at this list here, if there's anything on this list we don't approve, let's pull it out and vote on the balance of it. And then we can do that one separate. Can we do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. So you would have at the moment, we're back up to the main motion again, on the one that Councilmember Blackman just made, which was EMS at 10% for your certified staff. So what the chair will need to do now is call for a discussion on that. And then you can make another motion, an amending motion to add whatever of these you would like to. And then we can move back up and keep going through the process.
Well, I.
Getting a headache over all this.
I'm getting confused.
I make a motion that.
Yes.
You amended it, by the way.
Yes, amended.
That's amended. That's amended.
So you're back up to your second reading of the budget as presented with that amendment. And now we need discussion. So if there's another amendment, you're adding more amendments to your, to the budget.
We're on second reading of budget as amended.
We're not approving the whole budget, just as you.
No, so you are not moving there. You're still making amendments on that.
We have one amendment that has passed.
Correct.
And I'm looking for other amendments.
Mr. Chair, I make a.
Mr. Chair, call for discussion and that's where the amendments will be proper.
Discussion on other possible amendments.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we add the $50 per day for funeral home storage free for the coroner's office, making the part-time deputy coroner position full-time, increasing sheriff office and detention center career ladder pool from sworn staff to 10% of current pay from 6.5%. Now, that's going to be separate.
I'll have to be listed as separate.
Create a competitive pay hierarchy for fire rescue and emergency management, which bring the minimum firefighter's pay up to $44,000, $45,000. Include cost of living increase for the solicitor and public defender at 6.5 to keep them equivalent to county employees. And add $228,000 for administrative renovation as an additional project to be paid for with fund balance.
I'll second that.
I just, I just want to ask for discussion purposes. What does the competitive pay hierarchy for fire and rescue? Can we clarify that it is what you presented to us last time?
Yeah, that's what was presented during the budget.
$281,000. Mine was 280. Yours was a little bit higher, so.
Yeah, it's a pay structure identified at the workshop.
Okay. Will you accept that amended language? I have a question here. The public defender and solicitors, it sort of reads like we're trying to keep the staff there at 6.5%, not necessarily to all the attorneys. Is that what the intention of that was?
So this year, in the past, we've split the two attorneys and staff and done funding towards their career ladder. But as it stands, it would just be in across the board for all of the staff, not, not attorneys treated separately from the others.
So it's everybody?
Everybody. And we already had them in at 6%. So really, the additional half percent to just get them exactly where we were is only about $91,000.
Okay. I just, I wanted to clarify that because it was a little confusing.
Yeah, okay.
All right. We've got a.
An amendment on the.
Another amendment. Did we get a second on it?
You got a second.
I second.
Yes.
Brian, second discussion. I think we're ready to vote on our second amendment to ordinance 2023-1849. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, likewise?
Now, at this point, Mr. Chair, anything else we? Okay, I'm sorry.
Passed by a vote of seven for none opposed. And there was some discussion on deputies and detention center employees. Does somebody want to start a discussion?
To add two deputies and.
Okay, wait, wait one moment. You've got to go back to your main motion again on the floor, which is second reading of the budget as now you have amended it twice.
Yeah, so let's.
Could I make a point of clarification? If we got to do these deputy correction officers, we need to put them in the same motion. Otherwise, we're going to have to amend and amend again. Okay, all right.
All right. So we're having continued discussion on our amended ordinance 2023-1849. Is that proper?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if you call for discussion again, if there are further amendments, they can be made at that time.
What she said. It's late.
All right, I move to add two deputies and two.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Call for discussion first so that we can properly go into this.
Discuss, this is, I would like to comment on that. To help keep the millage increase in check, I would recommend that we, that we do the four deputies, but we do them for a half year. And some kind of, if we're going to do a detention center, you know, whether you add two or four, that maybe that'd be in the fourth quarter. Because, you know, it's already July and staffing up is not going to be done overnight. Sheriff, would you like to say something?
Can you give me the two, the original two in July? And if you go hold off to six months later, do the other two instead of four at, you know, December or January?
That'll be up to council. I mean, somebody will make that motion.
I think the two is already included in the budget, isn't it?
Yeah, I think, I think we're getting, you're talking about the two deputies already in there?
Yeah.
So they're already factored in as of July.
Okay, so they are.
So we have two in there now factored in starting July and then.
Then these additional.
So my suggestion will be to factor two more in in January, a half year.
Will that work for you, Barry?
Or it needs to be stated.
What about detention?
How about the detention, Barry?
So I'm looking for any, I've heard detention officers, any recommendations on how it needs to be looked at. Mr. Carnes recommended four.
I think we need to give him at least two.
Well, we're still on amendment. Have we made an amendment?
We haven't made it yet.
Okay.
They hadn't made the amendment. We're discussing, and the cost of each detention officer is approximately how much?
I would say four. Be roughly a mill. Kim?
Mr. Chairman, while we're waiting, I did want to point out that the council does have a rule of order that no meetings run past 10:30.
Oh, we do.
You do in your, in your own procedures, but that may be amended. So you all can make that determination. I just want you to know.
Does that include executive session?
And we shall have executive session tonight. Yes, we do have executive session tonight.
But does a 10:30 timeframe include executive session?
Yes, it does.
Yes, it says that you must adjourn your meeting by 10:30. Yes.
So you can amend that.
We'll amend that.
But we do it before 10:30.
I do, I do have one other.
Just for clarification to.
They're going to arrest us if we don't.
To extend that as well as a two-thirds vote.
All I know is when they had those, those meetings to 12 or 1 o'clock in the morning, those people must have finally got smart and said, hey, we not going to do this anymore.
We are just looking at approximate number and I would think starting pay is, you're probably looking at $300,000 minimum.
Four of them.
Four of them.
Because you're talking with corrections about uniforms and all the total and then fringe.
Would there be any desire to maybe a half year on these positions?
I would say a half year on those positions as well.
On all four of those. That would, that would get it down to a half mill probably.
Okay.
All right, there's. All right, I think we were, y'all good with?
Who's making them up?
A half year. Sheriff. Sheriff, would you be good with a half year on those four positions?
Two, two deputies and he's already getting.
Deputies already.
Two more.
Two more in January.
Brian's talking about the detention.
Or detention officer.
A half of year.
So it'd be two deputies and four detention that start in January.
All right, any discussion?
We did discuss, ready for a motion.
Do we have an amendment for that?
No, we're looking for, I was, so, do, would somebody like to make an amendment to our amended 2023-1849 budget?
I think Billy was making amendment.
Okay, let's go again.
I amend that we hire two deputies and four correction officers, starting in January.
2024.
2024.
You got a motion from Mr. Mosteller. Amendment and second from Mr. McGriff. Any more?
He's the lord, Charlene's on the boat.
Any, any more discussion on that? I think we're ready to vote on this amendment. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, likewise, we have unanimous approval. And just, it's Mr. Blackman, just want to assure the fire, fire department that the, the pay structure is there and that they, that they all understand the wage increases and all.
You have a spreadsheet that listed all the different positions.
Yeah.
That's part of your reading of the oath.
So, so that, that, that is the pay structure that this council is voting on for the fire department. Correct?
We've already voted on that, though.
Yeah, I would just want to make sure.
This is just additional stuff.
Yes, sir.
Fire fee for the Indian land in.
Pleasant Valley.
Pleasant Valley, we need to discuss that as an amendment from 175. And I need to know the information.
Would you, the fire, the fire, would you, would you discuss that going forward?
So yes, so the fire fee presently for Indian land in Pleasant Valley is $90 for each district as well as Van Wyck. Now we're talking about the merger of Indian land and Pleasant Valley, we're suggesting a higher fee because they're looking in the next fiscal year to add staff and go to a full-time staffing model. Based upon the full-time staffing model and increase in operations, they have proposed roughly a $4 million budget. So to address revenue from the fire rooftop fee, we've identified there are a couple ways you could do that. You could lower, you could just simply, simply raise the fees from $90 up to something. We suggested 175. Or you could do a combination of raising the fee as well as lowering the equivalent residence unit or by which the rooftop fee is assessed in the commercial district. So depending upon if there's a number you're looking at, we've run a couple scenarios that we've shared with council, anywhere from the current 2,500 square feet down to 1,500 square feet or even 750 square feet. And so however council wants to maybe change the square footage and the dollar amount per square foot, that's where we need some input from council.
Yeah, I think I had asked at the last meeting what it would be like if commercial was to pay for it all.
And so we did say, commercial and residential can be at different rates. So if you still want to keep a residential component, you can have a different rooftop fee, $90, maybe move to 100, but commercial you could raise to a different fee. So again, it depends if you're talking about the increase in, from basically their current budget is roughly 2.3 million to get to the 4 million for the commercial, again, depending on the ERU, so.
Now, what's, what's the scenarios with the, with the reduced into 1,500? What's, what's the numbers?
So if you reduce it to 1,500 square feet down from the current 2,500, if you are putting that on commercial versus residential, it depends again how you want to look at it.
Just commercial, I'm at.
Gotcha, I'm looking here. For the $90 fee, I mean, is there a number fee you're looking at?
We talked about that. I threw out the number at the last Cal meeting of 150, and I wanted to know if we adjusted the ERU for the, for the commercial, what we could, what would it need to be reduced to, to get to that 150 and get the fire service what they wanted? And Mr. Luis asked about putting all, it all of that increase on ERU, is that correct?
That is correct.
So I want to make sure I'm reading the information correctly on the 1,500.
Keep residential at 90.
So it should generate, if you do the 1,500, but you only charge $150, that generates 986,000, so you're still short.
For the commercial part.
For the commercial part.
Because the spreadsheet you sent out showed $150 for commercial and residential, and it still puts you about $300,000 short of the budget that they need.
Yeah, so if you drop the square footage down to 1,500 and maintain it 150 for residential and commercial, you're at 3.6 million.
So what if you left residential at 90 and then reduced the ERU to 1,500 square feet? What would the number, the amount have to be on commercial to cover the entire amount?
And I don't have that factored right here, I'll see if I can.
That's, that's kind of what I was looking at, it was, I now wanted to know, like, for example, how much 10,000 square foot business was going to pay?
Yeah. And that, some of the things that we'd sent out to you had some of those examples about on commercial, if you're at 1,500, for instance, if you have, if we take a Walmart. So Walmart at current fee 90, they pay 10,000. If you do the ERU at 1,500, at $150 fee, they go up $8,000. So that commercial would see an $8,300 increase. So we have some examples on there about what the square footage impact would be on different commercials.
And we got to be careful on, our commercial stuff's already paying 10 and 1/2% insurance, taxes now. So now a big burden already on them right now as it is. I know we need to raise it on them, but we just need to be careful in trying to put it all on them, because anybody that's in a small business knows what it's like to pay 10 and 1/2% tax, property taxes. That, that gets into a lot of money in a small business, and, and then when you tackle big.
Well, we just incentivize them with some large signs and bicycles.
Sales tax by lost revenue is returned to the taxpayers.
Mr. Chairman, I think it might be time to make a motion that we amend our rules of order that we go past 10:30.
I have a motion to amend our rules of order.
Second.
Have a motion, Mr. Black, second from Mr. Luis. In discussion, all in.
Takes two-thirds vote.
Huh?
It takes a two-thirds vote.
All in favor, raise your right hand. We got unanimous approval.
As soon as time is right as we can.
So I don't, yeah, so I don't know, again, if there's information we don't have, but again, if you want to do, lower the ERU from the current 2,500 square feet to 1,500 square feet, which would be both residential and commercial, and charge a fee of 150, that generates 3.6 million dollars.
You said ERU for residential, we don't have ERU, do we have ERU?
Well, the rooftop fee, I mean, it's one, I mean, the rooftop fee is one. So that's what you're looking at for a $150 fee with a lower 1,500 square foot.
That decision has not been made yet, definitely. And we got one more, one more reading. Could it possibly be on the council of the whole agenda for a definite discussion about that fee?
For notice.
Do we have enough notice?
In 24 hours? Tuesday.
We can amend, we can amend the Cal meeting agenda with 24 hours notice, so we are still in that window, so yeah, we can add it to the Cal.
Add it to Wednesday.
I don't, yeah.
No, we don't need to. Me, you're right, it wouldn't be a vote, but we share information, yes.
Yes.
Because the, the dollar amount of budget's not going to change, it's just going to change where it's coming from.
Correct. And how you allocate it, correct.
All right, so right now, we are, second reading of orders 23-1849, that has been amended.
Three times.
Three times. Is there any more discussion?
I think Mr. Blackman.
The, before we vote.
Did you want to add in about review, out of lower millage and stuff like that? Because if you don't put that in, we're going to vote on it. Oh, yeah, yeah, I want to make the amendment to instruct staff to bring us back a list of cost cutting for 1%, 2%, 3%, or the mills, one mil, two mil, three mil.
Second.
I'm going to tell you right now, I'm not voting for a six mil increase in the general fund.
That's a, I, I don't know.
We don't need the full vote.
How about, we'll, we'll just have to go through the budget Wednesday and see if there are any recommendations.
Well, you know, we hadn't wanted to do it in the past, so I thought, since we don't want to do it, then we just put on staff to do it, but it's flexible.
By Wednesday? And you want staff to do this by Wednesday?
No, I don't think that's what you.
That's not, that's not, I mean, that's not doable.
Talking about having staff do it and then have that information for the next meeting to look at on third reading.
I'm just saying, Wednesday is not possible, I don't think, if that's what you're talking about.
Was he so?
We, I think council can look at some of the cuts that Mr. Carnes proposed and, and go through them.
I'm telling you, the airport money can be cut in half, and that can be a savings of.
We're not, we're not talking about that, Alan.
I am.
We not.
I am.
Oh, we are.
Not.
We are. Because again, we don't need it. We don't need three and a half, because the FAA is giving us.
2.6.
Alan, we've already voted on that, don't, don't.
Terry would like to talk about it, too.
Don't, don't.
Terry will talk about it, too.
Yeah, I would, I'd have a discussion about it.
It's not approved yet.
Don't talk about that.
That's the amount we believe we're eligible for, and we get a grant. So, Mr. Chairman, I think are we at the point where you have your amendments for the second reading? We agreed for the Cal meeting on Wednesday, we'll talk about the ERUs. If there's some other budget conversation, we can piggyback off of that for Wednesday. I don't have anything prepared beyond the ERU, we'll have some of the ERU information.
Can you send me that spreadsheet again, Dennis, on the ERU? And I'm looking for, I want to know what it's at, at 2,500, how much commercial generates? I want to know 1,500, and I want to know 1,000.
And I also want to make an amendment that we make the organizational chart part of our budget.
I second.
Mr. Chairman, so we can clear up here, the first motion you made, Councilmember Blackman, that was more of a directive on information you would like, it wasn't necessarily a change to the budget as presented or amended at this point, correct?
We can amend it.
Correct. But your motion that you're making now is to add the organizational chart as a part of the budget, so that would be an amendment to the budget.
Yeah.
So that's four amendments, right?
Yes, ma'am.
You noted that, yeah.
Louise, yes.
On that information you're sending me, what I want to know is, is if we, what's, what do we need to charge the commercial for those, for those rates that I talked about, 25, 1,500, and 750, to bring down that 175 more towards 150?
Okay.
I just need to know what the, and then I need to know how that's going to impact the businesses, because like Mr. Mosteller said, we can't just unload on the businesses.
Let me, because we have a motion on the floor, let me make sure I talk with you afterwards, that we'll have that for you on Wednesday. The motion about the org chart, or is that second?
And we have a second from Mr. Luis. Any discussion on that?
Which chart? Organizational chart. It'll be part of the budget, so we'll know how many people are in each department that we're compensating them for, so there'll be no moving of people without us knowing about it, because they cannot, staff cannot move without.
And just to be clear, that organizational chart will have the department and then the title, correct? Or do you? Okay.
Okay, let, let me add the point of clarification there. Don't have a problem with the organizational chart, but can those positions be moved around without coming before council?
No, there's, within the departments, I mean, the way we're structured, there may be some title changes if you want to.
But one can't transfer from another department unless it comes through us?
Yeah, generally, yeah.
And by doing what I'm saying, we're definitely locking that in.
But what I want to make sure is, I don't know what I can produce in terms of, when I think organizational chart, what you saw earlier.
That already happens, right?
Correct, I mean, correct.
What do we do?
You approve positions, and so, and fund positions, and we administer them.
So we already get that information, don't we?
Yeah, we provided the org charts, and you all asked for org charts, last go around as a follow-up, we presented the organizational charge for each department.
So you want to know how many work in each department, the titles, the job titles?
A lot of compensation in a department. And so, let's put those positions down in that organizational chart, you do a subchart, is what you do, is you, you take your, however you want to take it, whether it be a department or a division, and you just simply make that as an attachment, show it as an attachment on your main, on your main sheet.
Just as a reminder, we got four minutes to make that motion to go over.
But we already, you were gone.
You were gone with the.
Did it without me?
Yeah.
I'm always the last one to know.
All right, any more discussion on the amendment to, this fourth amendment to ordinance 2023-1849?
I think we let Alan and Dennis hash out the details of it, we won't sweat the details.
Ready to vote on that? All in favor, right hand. We have unanimous approval. All right, are we ready to vote on second reading of orders 2023-1849 as amended four times?
Uh, I guess so.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, likewise, we have unanimous approval. Second reading of orders 2023-1849, discussion action items, approval of proposal update Lancaster County priorities, prioritize community needs list.
I looked at it, looks good.
Mr. Marsh, any discussion on the, are we good on that? We don't need any, do you need a motion to approve it? Do I have a motion?
A motion to approve?
I have a motion from Mr. Mosteller, I have a second from Mr. Carnes. Mr. Blackman, all in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval. Let's move down to 9B. We have a lot of approvals of appointments and reappointments to various boards. Do any of these require a two-thirds vote?
Yeah, a couple of them do.
Miss.
Can we try a vote on all of it?
Can we try a vote?
Yes, sir.
Is.
Make a motion, we vote on all of it one time.
Okay, and, and then just make sure it's legal. Can we vote on them in?
As long as you get a two-thirds.
Yes, you can vote on them in globa.
All right, I have a motion.
So moved, then, do we?
Okay, I'm sorry. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval. Now, let's move down to executive session. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved. To go into executive session.
Receive legal advice subject to attorney-client privilege regarding a potential contractual matter for land acquisition, and receive legal advice regarding a potential contractual matter regarding land recommendation, and receipt of legal advice subject to attorney-client privilege regarding contractual matter.
Motion to go into executive. Motion to go into executive session to do everything Steve just said.
Oop, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Louise, all in favor, raise your right hand. Uh, we have, uh, unanimous approval. We are now in executive session.
Okay.
Where did I go? Like your food dealer.
Ready. I'd like to call this meeting, Lancaster County Council, back to order to have a motion to come out of executive session.
The move.
Most for Mr. Blackman, and second for Mr. Carnes. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval to come out of executive session.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, council met in executive session for three items. The receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding a potential contractual matter for land acquisition. Receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding a potential contractual matter regarding a land recommendation. And the receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding a contractual matter. No decisions were made in executive session and no votes were taken.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the county administrator to move forward with a contractual matter regarding a land recommendation within the parameters discussed in executive session.
I have a motion for Mr. Carnes to have a second. Second from Mr. McGiff. Any discussion? I think we're ready to vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval. And at 11:15, do I have a motion to adjourn?
The move.
I have a motion for Mr. Louise. A second for Ms. McGiff. All in favor, raise your right hand.
See what he says.
We have unanimous approval.